Good evening, everyone. Thank you for turning into our virtual city council meeting tonight, March 8th, 2021, as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I want to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the meeting. All public comment on the consent calendar, matters of council interest, and items not on tonight's agenda will be taken at one time during item number five. Comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time the item on which you are speaking is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on a Stown broadband cable, channel 26, and Comcast cable, channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse, channel 99, and are streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. As a reminder, we are now enabling video when city council members, city staff, and guest presenters are speaking. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties as we transition to this new meeting format. I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she would call the roll, please.
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Aguirre if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all, individual for, I'm sorry, one nation under all we, I'm totally blanking them. I'm sorry, Mayor, I totally blanked on the rest of it, but thank you for love.
With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Aguirre. We now move on to item number four, presentation and acknowledgements, 4A. The Global Jewish Advocacy US Conference of Mayors Partnership: Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism. Tonight, I am very.
One moment, we're adjusting the mayor's computer. Good evening, everyone. Please hold for just a moment while we adjust the mayor's video. Thank you.
All right, everyone. Hi, this is Vice Mayor Hale, and in these situations with technology, this is where the vice mayor comes in. So I wanted to keep us moving forward here while the mayor's computer reboots, and we have a presentation from the US Conference of Mayors Partnership on the Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism. Mr. Klebenov, were you prepared to present?
I am, thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you to the mayor for the invitation and members of the Redwood City City Council for allowing me to speak on AJC's behalf. My name is Mark Klebenov. I'm a member of the American Jewish Committee San Francisco Regional Board, the National Policy Steering Committee, and a Peninsula resident right nearby in Menlo Park. I would like to begin by thanking Mayor Diane Howard for standing with AJC and the US Conference of Mayors as we fight against the rising evil of anti-Semitism in our country. Last year, on the anniversary of the murder of 11 Jewish congregants in the Tree of Life synagogue, AJC released a survey of American Jews on anti-Semitism. Nine in 10 Jews believe anti-Semitism is a problem in the United States, and eight in 10 believe it's only getting worse. Two in five American Jews have been victimized by anti-Semitism. One in five have been targets of anti-Semitism online. Another one in five have experienced anti-Semitism on their college campuses, including hate crimes at my own alma mater, UC Davis. Perhaps most concerning, this has led to nearly one in three Jewish Americans avoiding certain places or hiding their Judaism out of concern for their safety or comfort as Jews. This is unacceptable in any democracy, but especially in a country that was founded and continues to be a refuge for people around the world seeking security and freedom. My parents are an example of this empathy and compassion. They are immigrants from the former Soviet Union who left a country for the freedom that the United States could afford them to openly practice their faith without persecution and fear. We need to make sure that America continues that legacy. Thank you to Redwood City for taking this first and important step with us. We need to begin to define anti-Semitism and call it out, whether it comes from the far right, the far left, or religious extremism. We need to support stronger hate crime legislation to better understand this problem and equip ourselves to combat it. We at AJC are grateful to partner with Redwood City in this endeavor. On a personal note, my wife, my daughter, and I would like to thank the mayor for her support and to the Redwood City City Council for listening. It is also why, as a family, we're looking at Redwood City as a city to make our permanent home, knowing that the leadership of this community will stop at nothing to stand up and fight anti-Semitism wherever it may, wherever it may appear. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do hope that you do make it your home. You'll be very welcomed here. Thank you so much. We do, I do have a brief statement that was prepared by the mayor. I can read that, or we can move to public comment, given that the mayor is not here.
Vice Mayor Hale, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we just, well, all that you missed, you, well, you missed the presentation, but I did not read your statement, so it's available for you to read.
Thank you very much. Oh, and I just got through being patient with us through technical difficulties. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Hale. I was about to say how honored I am to share in my participation in an initiative to speak out against the growing threat of anti-Semitism. As public officials and community leaders, it's crucial that we speak out and declare unequivocally that anti-Semitism is incompatible with democratic values that are at the very bedrock of our society. We must fight this increasingly violent and ugly trend. I will now read portions of the Mayors United Against Anti-Semitism statement that I, along with over 300 mayors from across the country, have signed in partnership with the Global Jewish Advocacy and US Conference of Mayors. Vicious attacks on American soil have demonstrated that anti-Semitism must be confronted with the urgency in the United States. In October 2018, 11 Jews were killed in the deadliest attack against the Jewish community in US history at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Jews have also been murdered in Poway, California, Jersey City, New Jersey, and Monse, New York, simply for being Jews. We witnessed chants of Jews will not replace us in Charlottesville, and Camp Auschwitz, and other anti-Semitic messages displayed during the assault on the US Capitol. And so we gather as leaders of our cities and our communities today to jointly say, enough. In a world of global communications where anti-Semitic ideas spread rapidly, a concerted and principled response is required to raise awareness, to educate, and to ensure decency prevails. As mayors and municipal leaders, we have a unique responsibility to speak out against the growing menace of anti-Semitism by affirming the following: We condemn anti-Semitism in all its forms, including hatred and prejudice directed towards Jews, stereotypes or conspiracy theories about Jews, Holocaust denial or distortion, and denying the Jewish people's right to self-determination and/or the Jewish state's right to exist. We recognize the ever-present need to be vigilant about efforts to prevent and report acts of anti-Semitism and other hate crimes, and we therefore commit to working within and across our communities to advance the values of respectful coexistence. We call upon mayors, municipal leaders, and other elected officials in the United States and around the world, and all people of good faith, to join us in declaring unequivocally that anti-Semitism is incompatible with fundamental democratic values. Members of the Global Jewish Advocacy Iran Hazari and local board member Mark Klebenov have joined us this evening, and I know they spoke to you while I was unable to, but thank you, Vice Mayor Hale, for presenting the proclamation. And to the two people who spoke before me, thank you so much for your words. This community is a diverse community, open to all, and we all stand united to support that, so that we can all live in peace with each other. Thank you so much. It was an honor for me to be part of that tonight. Moving on to public comment on the consent calendar and items not on the agenda. At this time, we will take public comment on items that are on the consent calendar, on matters of council interest, and on items not on the agenda. If you wish to make a public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized by myself. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. In order to see how many speakers we have for general public comment, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak on a consent calendar item, matters of council interest, or an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand now. We'll wait a minute while people put their hand up. At this time, we have four speakers. At this time, it appears we have four speakers. And our last speaker is call-in user number one. So each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. I will call your name in the order that hands were raised, and I will call two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking. It's okay for your comments to be brief, and it is okay to state that you agree with the previous speaker. My first speaker is Johanna Rasmussen, and my second is Michael Solario.
Good evening. My name is Johanna Rasmussen, and I am the chairwoman of the Farm Hill Neighborhood Association. And I would like to thank the mayor and vice mayor for responding to our request for a special study session for the 2021-2022 budget. We were happy to receive word this afternoon that you have scheduled a community meeting on April 22nd. I also would like to announce the launch of the Farm Hill Neighborhood Association website, which is www.farmhillneighborhood.com. Residents can find information on our current projects, read neighborhood news, and watch our meetings. Lastly, I would like to express my strong support for Charlene Tinka Blackman for our Parks and Recreation and Community Services Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michael Solario, and then Clara Jackal.
Hi, y'all. My name is Michael Solorio, and I'm a resident of Ward 6. And I want to echo what Johanna said, especially about y'all having a special study session specifically on the police budget on April 22nd. I'm really grateful that y'all have created a, a new event for us to, for the public to give input on something that we're so passionate about. So I'm really thankful that y'all listened to us, and I really look forward to reimagining the police budget with y'all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Clara Jackal, and then my final speaker is call-in user number one.
Hi, and this is Clara Jackal. Thank you very much for, I'm going to echo the comments of previous speakers, and thank you for scheduling that community meeting on public safety services and budgets to be held in April. It was really encouraging to see that announcement today. And after the community's calls for a police budget reform last year were deferred to the next fiscal cycle, it's going to be really important for this year's budget to really be meaningfully shaped by public input. So I just urge you to ensure that the planning process doesn't include steps to incorporate the input given at that session. My other comment is for item 6A on the consent calendar. It's really good to see the redistricting process beginning to make sure that the council districts accurately and fairly reflect our city's current residents, and I'm really looking forward to the opportunities for community engagement and public input. And I would like to understand, as a process gets underway, how the assignment of sitting council members will be handled, especially if their locations don't align one-to-one with the new districts. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that process as soon as it can be shared. Thank you.
Thank you. My final speaker is call-in user number one.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Helena Luna. I'm a resident of Redwood City. I'd like to make a public comment on the consent calendar, item 6A, for services with redistricting the city council districts. My hope is that this company is unbiased and that there's true community input for the future redistricting of our city. Also, I would like to bring to everyone listening that I read something that was kind of alarming. There was a report that from 2014 to 2020, from 2020, Redwood City and the county took $38.2 million from the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or ERAF, because our school district is too wealthy, and instead of the city investing that money back to benefit the community, it was, some of the funds were used to evict the people from Dock Town back in 2018. So it's alarming to read that. If that is the case, I'm asking that the city council starts reinvesting any future ERAF funds back to the underserved neighborhoods, which save street crossings and save bike lanes, since several of those neighborhood schools that were closed, there was no mitigation from the city to help those children. Also, to have a safe playground equipment in all neighborhood schools, to have the fields open and remain open at all times. This is definitely much cheaper and doable than building new park wrecks. So please, I hope someone looks into that, and if that is the case, it is shame on the city for taking funds from the school and reinvesting it on Dock Town, which benefits the developers. I also want to echo Johanna's support for the new Parks and Wrecks Commissioner, Charlene Tinka Blackman. So I, I'm here for, to support her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your comments. If you were not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the city council at council@redwoodcity.org. I would like to ask if our city attorney would like to respond, or maybe our city manager, if there is any information that we might have regarding ERAF funds and how they were used. If we don't have an answer at this time, then I would suggest that we get some information together, and we put it out in our newsletter, our e-newsletter.
Mayor Howard, I'd be happy to briefly address that. And apologies, my desk isn't quite at the right height here. Educational revenue augmentation funds are a form of the city being repaid for money that was taken from local governments in order to support the state's obligation to schools. It's confusing, and, and there has been some misinformation about how those funds are used, but essentially they are repayment on property taxes that are owed to the city. We can provide additional information, but they are actually funds that are owed to the city. They are not to be used for the schools. The state is to refill their obligation to schools and school funding. So that's about all I should probably say at this point this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I appreciate it. At this time, all public speakers can stay on the Zoom call or continue to follow the meeting through the live broadcast, either on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org, or on cable television on local channel 26, Comcast channel 27, or AT&amp;T U-verse, channel 99. Moving on now to item number six, the consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. I'd like to ask the council now if anyone would like to make a motion, or if there is a question about an item on the consent calendar.
So moved, Ready?
Moved by Councilmember Ready and seconded by
Aguirre.
by Councilwoman Aguirre. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now read all the items that we just approved. Agreement for services with redistricting partners to provide mapping, demographic analysis, and community engagement support for the city of Redwood City's 2020 Census City Council District redistricting process. Approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021 city council meeting, and approve claims and checks from March 8th, 2021 through March 22nd, 2021, and the usual and necessary payments through March 22nd, 2021. Moving on to item number seven, staff reports. Item 7A is the creation of a city council equity and social justice subcommittee and a police advisory committee. Assistant City Manager and Administrative Services Director Michelle Poche Flaherty will give the presentation. Ms. Flaherty?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and members of the city council. The action before the city council tonight follows up on a discussion the city council had in October. This item was originally scheduled for city council discussion on January 25, but had to be continued to this evening. These proposals are based on the work of the city council's Ad Hoc Committee on Policing. Mayor Howard, then Vice Mayor Mazur, and Councilmember Aguirre served on that committee during the second half of 2020. After this presentation, the city council will be asked to consider whether to approve two resolutions. The resolutions establish responsibilities and an appointment process for both a city council subcommittee on equity and social justice and a police advisory committee of community members. The Ad Hoc Committee on Policing grounded their recommendations in community dialogue and research over the last six months of 2020. The proposals also reflect city council actions in August and October. As part of the revised budget presented on October 26th, the Ad Hoc Committee recommended formation of two new committees, one a subcommittee of the city council, and one a committee of community members, which would advise the police chief. The city council generally supported these recommendations, and the Ad Hoc Committee continued work into December to develop the recommendations before you this evening. Before going into the specifics of the recommendations before the council this evening, I'd like to provide a brief update on some of the more recent actions the city has taken in the areas of policing and equity since the previous council discussion in October. On the first of the year, revisions to the policing policies related to de-escalation, use of force, body-worn cameras, and other policing practices were completed through a comprehensive update to the Police Department Policy Manual and posted on the city's website. Body-worn cameras have been purchased, and a community meeting was held on February 10 to share current information and answer questions related to the body-worn camera program. And a departmental team has convened to coordinate the preparation of data regarding the Police Department workforce and Police Department operations for release to the public on the city's website. Public updates should begin by the end of this month. As you know, the city council approved a two-year agreement for a pilot program with San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and three other cities to form a mental health partnership crisis program. In addition, the Police Department has leveraged the increased participation of diverse young men and women in the cadet program to support community programs, including a safely-delivered holiday and toy book drive despite the pandemic, COVID screening events at the Fair Oaks Community Center, and regularly-scheduled food and clothing distribution events for the homeless. The Police Department continues to hire and promote a diverse range of workforce members. In recent months, the city has also elevated diversity, equity, and inclusion in a variety of ways. Brianna Evans has joined the city manager's office as Redwood City's first Equity and Inclusion Officer. Redwood City Public Library recognized United Against Hate Week with broadening conversations through the Human Library event. The city council approved the Arts Commission's work plan for the creation of a racial equity mural, and the Arts Commission launched its recruitment for the Racial Equity Steering Committee. The Public Works Department has initiated design of an equity tool for public works and the integration of equity into the city's climate adaptation plan. The Redwood City Council celebrated Black History Month with a proclamation recognizing Black History Month and the Sequoia High School Black Student Union, and the Redwood City Public Library celebrated Black History Month with a series of community events. And of course, the city joined with community partners to host Redwood City's 11th Annual Lunar New Year Celebration. to host Redwood City's eleventh annual Lunar New Year celebration, which was livestreamed due to COVID nineteen. In addition, city staff are coordinating with the San Mateo County Vaccine Equity Team to ensure equitable distribution and information sharing regarding COVID nineteen testing and vaccinations. The library has applied to join a cohort of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GARE. Our economic development team incorporated into the requirements for retail storefront cannabis sales applications, the inclusion of an equity plan for each business. The city is partnering through, with Redwood City together, uh, and with Stanford University to conduct a COVID nineteen impact study. Redwood City is offering cultural humility workshops to all volunteers who serve on city advisory boards, commissions, and committees, along with city council members. Two-thirds of our appointees have already registered or completed the workshop to date, and more sessions are being scheduled. And finally, as an employer, the city has conducted several listening sessions with city employees and recently completed an employee survey on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues for our workforce. So returning now to the actions before the city council tonight, the first resolution before you would establish the mission and appointment process for a city council subcommittee on equity and social justice. As with other city council committees, the mayor would appoint members to the subcommittee, and Mayor Howard indicated that councilmembers Espinoza Garnica, Ready, and Smith would serve on this subcommittee, um, back at the January eleventh city council meeting, that announcement was made. And given substantial interest, interest in these issues by the whole city council, the resolution would provide for one-year terms to allow three different members of the city council to serve on this committee each year. The subcommittee would work with staff to help the city apply an equity lens to the city's policies and service delivery. This includes developing an equity plan for city council consideration to help define what it means to have equity as a foundational guiding principle in the city's strategic plan. Additionally, the subcommittee would review and propose policies to stimulate the equitable treatment of all residents and promote equity and social justice in the community. This could include creation of an equity and social justice The second resolution would establish the police advisory committee. The committee would be composed of eleven total community members, one appointed by each of the seven city council members, and four appointed by the city council as a whole. Committee members would reflect the diversity of the Redwood City community, and we would anticipate accepting applications in March with the city council making appointments in April, or perhaps early May. The committee would develop an annual work plan in consultation with the police chief and present it to the city council for approval later this year. The purpose of the committee would be to support partnership and transparency between the community and the police department, to advocate the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to support the police department's goals of protecting life and property, improving the quality of life, and reducing crime and the fear of crime, consistent with the department's motto, "Providing excellent service with integrity and respect." As currently proposed, the advisory committee's activities would include reviewing policies, discussing community concerns related to crime and policing practices, and receiving an annual report on complaints against any police personnel. The recommendation is that the council adopt the proposed resolutions establishing the city council subcommittee on equity and social justice and establishing the police advisory committee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have of staff regarding this item.
Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. Before we begin public comment, uh, could you clarify, I've received a number of questions around the council appointees. Would that come before or after the application process? Would you clarify that for us?
Yes, uh, we would be posting the application on the website by close of business tomorrow, and we would expect applications to be due by the end of March. And, um, only after that would the council then have the applicant pool to review and make, uh, appointments as individuals and as a group.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. Are there any council members who have another clarifying question before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Flaherty. I know you'll be here to answer any additional questions. We'll now take public comment on this item. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand now. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item, if you would raise your hand now, once I announce the last speaker, we won't take further per, public comment on this item. At this time, we have four speakers. Give it another ten seconds. So at this time, thank you, there are a total of five speakers, and the last speaker is Johanna Rasmussen. And there will be no more public talk, comment taken after she speaks. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, you'll be asked to email your public comment to the city council at council@redwoodcity.org. We have five speakers, and I will allow each speaker to speak for three minutes. I will call your names in the order that your hands are raised, and two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking, and it's okay for your comments to be brief, or to state that you agree with the previous speaker. So my first speaker is Pat in the house, and my second speaker is Clara Jackel.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I missed in the slides whether this, uh, police, uh, subcommittee, uh, has the authority and capability to, uh, uh, obtain information, statistics, and reports, uh, with respect to the PERT for, uh, local city, uh, law enforcement agencies territories, um, commonly or, or perhaps absurdly called the wellness program, COPS with clinicians, uh, uh, whether this, uh, committee has access to that data and reports therefrom, and whether that committee has the authority to either instruct or strongly recommend, and please be precise about the difference between instruct versus recommend, that the participating police chiefs, particularly Chief Mulholland, shall change course in any way, take police officers out of the calls, or have call centers personnel trained to listen for the difference between a purely mental health crisis or a crime in disguise of a mental health crisis. And such, uh, call center personnel be able with that distinction to determine whether armed officer need to reply, or clinician, uh, standing behind armed officers, several officers, by the way, or clinician goes alone to provide mental health assessment and consultation to the resident experiencing the crisis, and work with his family to keep him alive, unharmed, out of jail, and in, uh, future, uh, mental health, uh, services that are available, yet unknown, to ethnic minority population in this city. Thank you. I wait for your answer.
Thank you. We're going to hear from our speakers, and then any questions, I will ask our staff to respond. My next speaker is Clara Jackel, and then my next speaker after that is call-in user one.
Yeah. Hi, this is Clara Jackel. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, first, I want to say I'm eager to see the work that the, um, Subcommittee on Equity and Social Justice will do, um, for to that. Regarding the proposed police advisory committee, I do appreciate the intent to provide greater review on the actions of the police department. However, given that the committee's work plan will be set in conjunction with the chief of police, and the committee will have no disciplinary authority to enforce its directives, I find it difficult to see how it will lead to meaningful change. And so I urge you to continue looking for ways to provide the independent oversight that the community called for in the listening sessions last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Call-in user number one, and then Amanda Doherty.
Hi, good evening. My name's Marcelina Luna, and, um, I do agree with what, um, Clara just said, that this committee, it's being led by the police chief. It's almost like the police policing themselves, and this committee really doesn't have true power to make change in that department. Um, also going back to the Q and A, um, web and, or Zoom meeting that we had with the police chief, one of the questions on there came up was that to really bring equity, the police need to reflect our, our residents, our community. And when someone asked the chief how many of his officers are of colored, he, he said he did not know that answer, which I believe it's five or six officers out of ninety, which is really not equitable. And if they are truly honest about bringing equity, they need to reflect more like forty percent of the police force needs to be of color to represent our community. Um, the other topic was about, um, not just having, um, committees that, that really don't have true power to bring about to the police department, um, because to me, that, that's just another checkmark for our city council to check off that, oh, yes, we've done this committee or so forth. So if you are true about bringing equity, um, I think we need to have an independent, um, advisory, uh, committee for the police department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Amanda Doherty, and my final speaker is Johanna Rasmussen.
Hi, hi, this is Amanda Doherty, and I'll keep this short. I would just like to second what was said by Clara and Marcelina, who I think said it better than I can. Thank you. I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. And my final speaker is Johanna Rasmussen.
Thank you. Um, as the chair of the Farm Hill Neighborhood Association, I would like to assist with the recruitment for these, this commission. So if the city could provide in a, uh, some additional information on qualifications or what they are looking for specifically in a candidate to apply, I would be grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your comments. If you were not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the city council at council@redwoodcity.org. Uh, but there were a number of questions. I'm not sure that we can answer them at this time. Uh, I'd like to ask our city manager, several of them, I believe, we haven't really determined yet. As far as the diversity of our officers, I think we could possibly go into that at our April study session of public safety, but I just wanted to give the opportunity to our city manager if she did want to make any comments.
Certainly, I'd be happy to address, uh, some of the topics, and our chief is on the line as well and may be able to assist with answering the questions regarding, uh, the diversity statistics. So in terms of the authority of the committee, first, I want to clarify a couple of things. One is that the police chief position reports to the city manager, to me, and I report to the city council. And so one of the, um, thoughts behind this committee is that first, the committee would be a committee of the city council, appointed by the city council. So the committee itself is empowered by the city council, and the intention is that the committee would develop a work plan in conjunction with staff that would come to the city council, which is similar to how our other boards and commissions work. They provide advice on topics to, to staff and to the city council. And in supporting the committee, certainly, the, the police department and the chief would be involved with that. Additionally, several staff from the city manager's office would be involved. I expect to be involved. Uh, our assistant city manager, Michelle Pochette Flaherty, will be involved. Our Equity and Inclusion Officer, Brianna Evans, will be involved. And that's consistent with the involvement we've had over the last, uh, many months, as, as we've been discussing as a community, the role of policing and community needs. So I see this as a collaborative effort between, um, staff and between members of the community who'd be serving on the committee, both responding to what the city council asks us to focus on in terms of, um, addressing policing and policing needs within the community. One of the questions was related to the mental health program, and, and this committee would not be empowered with independent review or direction on this program. However, we would see this as the body that would get regular updates on how the program is going. And as has been the case so far, we would continue to report out to the city council and public this information as well, and again, are working toward, uh, evolving the, the model over time and would continue to report progress on that. I think that's, uh, most of the questions that I can assist with at this moment. And then Chief Mulholland, are you able to address the diversity statistics?
Yes, I can. City manager, Diaz, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to speak. Uh, as a department as a whole, those statistics are being worked on by our human resources staff. We anticipate there to be, um, uh, to have that data provided, uh, with other department statistics that are, uh, reported out towards the end of this month. Um, I can tell you, during my tenure as a chief of police, I, I've done quite a, uh, a bit to bring greater diversity into the organization. Um, I've hired or promoted eleven professional staff members, one hundred percent of those eleven professional staff members that have either been brought on board or promoted within the, within the organization, have either been a person of color, female, a member of the LGBTQ community, or a combination of the three. Um, during my tenure, I've hired twenty-four police officers. Fifteen of those police officers, roughly sixty-one percent, have been a person of color, female, LGBTQ, or a combination of the three. During my tenure, I've promoted, uh, eight, uh, officers to the rank of sergeant. Seven of those officers that were promoted, that's eighty-seven and a half percent of my promotions to the rank of sergeant, have been a person of color, female, LGBTQ, or, uh, a combination of the three. So thank you, uh, for giving me an opportunity to provide that information.
Thank you very much, uh, to our city manager for her explanation, and thank you, Chief Mulholland. Thank you for that very thorough explanation. I really appreciate that. I know you weren't given advance notice, so thank you for being here and being prepared to answer the question. I'd like, now like to move on to council discussion, and the city council questions are before you. They're on the screen, so you can address them as you make your comments. Who would like to start? Councilwoman Lizette Espinoza Garnica, you'll be first.
Uh, yeah, a council member, as, um, I don't identify as a woman. Um, but thank you very much. I, I wanted to say, first, I'm very glad and excited to see the, the Subcommittee on Equity and Social Justice. Um, this is very needed, very necessary. Of course, every department requires an equity lens, but what we need at this moment is really a specialized group of folks to really focus on, on what's been missed, um, what we're, we're not seeing, and ensuring that we actually have a lot more, um, evidence also to ourselves. Uh, we need, we need to start supplying for ourselves our own data and stuff, and that's something I'm excited to do while on the committee in my seating. Um, you know, collecting more local data, uh, that shows, you know, substance abuse, um, um, response by police to these calls, um, also for mental health, um, or domestic violence. response by police to these calls, also for mental health, domestic violence, these kind of calls, and learning ways that we can have transformative justice be part of our city model less than rather than a carceral system. So I'm very excited about that. I am not excited about how the Police Committee is proposed. I see it as it is. Being that it's an advisory council, an advisory committee, it will be performing as a sort of tool for the police to look like they're listening to the community. But there isn't really any way that these members of the committee can be, you know, enforcing anything. They can't enforce investigation. They can't hire or fire anyone. And I honestly feel like the fact that they have to report to the police chief can be intimidating for folks that want to hold the police accountable. And I am dismayed to see that also the city police or the police are also part of the city staff. Or I'm sorry, I'm seeing that part of the staff supporting this advisory committee is police staff. So I'm dismayed to see those things. So changes that I would like to see. Well, it would be to make a couple amendments. I would like to see that in order for there to be honest and very decisive action to be made and not be hindered by any types of retaliation or fears of retaliation, that we try and replace the the police staff that supports this committee with City Manager's Office. And we try to also amend that instead of meeting with the Chief of Police, the the advisory committee would meet with the city manager, who hires our Chief of Police and does all of the liaison communication between us, council, and the police chief as well. I think that would be a great remedy for the issues we have here. This what I want is for there to be real change. And if we put police in charge of policing themselves, I don't think we're going to get anywhere. We really need to have a separation of police from these types of efforts that are trying to hold them accountable. And so I think it'd be remiss of us to go ahead and leave it as it is. Because then we would be, you know, discouraging many applicants who are probably much more affected by by the injustice experienced by the police. So we may get a pool of much more, you know, a white collar affluent folks or white people who don't experience this type of discrimination by police. And so those are the things I would like to make to raise to motion to change as well. On top of the the entire function of the of the committee as it is, I don't think it'll be fruitful overall, even with these changes. I think what we need is something that's much more investigative and disciplinary, or else there's no real teeth to this. I think if we pass it as it is, it'll be just an opportunity for the police to look like they're listening to to us, to the residents, right? Because they can go to as many council sessions, they can go to as many hearings as possible. That doesn't mean they have to take our any leadership or word from that. So I think we should follow examples that were that were also shared in the Stanford Report in the summer. In the report from the summer that we commissioned, there's many examples of oversight committees. And I would like to have an investigative oversight committee. Let me just be clear, to have investigative oversight committee. And I would love to have something similar to the one that they have in San Francisco, that according to that report, it is one of the strongest investigative oversight committees in the country. And it's appointed by the City Council. And there's they don't report to the Chief of Police at all. The citizens, the Citizen Police Commission determines all disciplinary action beyond 10 days suspensions and is the appellate body for all officer appeals. The model does not rely on internal divisions within the Police Department to conduct investigations. Allegations of excessive force, civilian harassment, other infractions by police while on duty are investigated by the Office of Civilian Complaints rather than a unit within the Police Department. I think we ought to make every effort to separate the Police Department from from policing themselves. We will not find real answers, true effective answers by doing that. So my motions are then to motion that we have the head or have this advisory committee report to the city manager instead of the Chief of Police. We also replace, as another amendment, we replace the 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 staff that supports them with City Manager's Office rather than the Police Department. And I'd like to motion that we make another resolution that we look into investigative and disciplinary models. Because I did propose that we try and do this, you know, instead of what's proposed to us now. But it seems like, according to the city manager, and we don't really have sufficient analysis of that or ways to implement it exactly. If you I don't know what the words exactly are, if you want to say it for me. But what we can do right now is pass a motion, a resolution to look into future investigative and disciplinary models. And those are the things I'd like to put onto the table for us to discuss and and pass. For the reasons I said, I think it'd be much more equitable. We'd have a lot more honest responses and a lot more folks invested or being part of the process that would otherwise be intimidated by working with the Chief of Police. Otherwise intimidated by working with police staff, you know. And that's when we're doing this work of trying to hold police accountable, we cannot rely on the police to do it themselves. So I think this is a very necessary step if we're going to walk the talk about policing. Leaving it up to their own devices, we won't really see much result. So so those are the concerns I've had and I want to raise. And I hope that we can pass my motions. I think it would help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I want to thank, of course, city staff for preparing this comprehensive overview of both committees. And really look forward to the conversation around this particular topic. So before I give a comment, I'd like to just have a few questions answered. So the first is about the scope of the advisory committee's work. I'm wondering if you could talk about how the work would evolve over time? And then how can we best memorialize the expectation of this evolution process today so that we don't kind of, for lack of a better term, drop the ball as we're moving, you know, on in time? So that's the first question. I'd love to just have a, you know, response on that.
Certainly, I'll jump in. And I would expect that, I guess, similar to other council boards and committees, the council would actually help shape that on an annual basis. So our typical practice is for boards, commissions, and committees to present a work plan. Usually at the beginning of the year, we're we're definitely off cycle right now, given COVID. But our intention would be in the next few months, the committee would would work together with staff to develop a work plan. The work plan would come to the City Council. You would weigh in on whether or not you think that's the right set of things for the committee to work on. They'd work for a year, giving you updates periodically, and then the process would happen kind of again in a year. So in in some ways, it's actually just very similar to our normal course of business with other boards, commissions, and committees that provide advisory functions to the to staff and City Council.
Great. And then just a quick follow on to that. You know, in your study of comparable cities or programs, you know, has there been an evolution process of these these committees or advisory groups? What what's your kind of read on the evolutionary evolutionary process of these types of committees or commissions?
That's a great question. So we checked in on the status for a handful of communities. And we also received information from a study that was done through researchers at Stanford, where they gave us kind of a range of approaches that are typical for cities of our size or larger. And one of the findings out of that study was that, yes, there's a wide array of how communities might have a committee of this kind, everything from providing advice and input to the police chief alone, without any city manager or City Council involvement, to probably the most oversight is, as was just described by Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, which is an independent commission with its own staff, its own substantial budget. So the the ad hoc committee did consider those range of options last fall. And the recommendation at that time was to proceed with a police advisory committee that reports to the council. So not simply to the the chief and that does have involvement by the council and in this case as well, through the city manager's office, given that we too will be supporting the committee and engaged.
Okay, great. So just a few somewhat tactical questions. So obviously, we decided on two-year terms. Kind of curious as to why we decided on two-year terms? And how do we feel that efficacy could be impacted or or maybe not impacted? Maybe it will make it even more effective. But I'm just curious as to that two-year term.
I'm not really remembering exactly how the the committee landed on two-year. I don't remember a long discussion compared to other terms. Michelle, do you have a better memory than I do on that point?
Thank you, Melissa. Yes, in reviewing how other commissions are set up, it was fairly consistent that most of them had two-year terms, just as a common model. It's not a term limit. So people could serve for quite a long time. They would just be re-upped routinely.
So it provides, in some senses, more flexibility for council to be able to add or remove people to the council or to, excuse me, to the advisory committee. I could also see, and correct me if I'm wrong in this thinking, that it could be somewhat problematic because, you know, those committee members who maybe are voicing more, let's call it controversial perspectives on this committee could be removed more easily, let's call it, right? I mean, so that's the kind of the trade off that we're dealing with? Is that a correct reading?
Well, I would I would say we do have a process for removal of members of boards and commissions and that the City Council can take. It's rare. And I would say it's a unusual step for the City Council to take to actually remove somebody that they have appointed. So it remains an option if if all else fails. But typically, when there's disputes and it does happen, sometimes there are differences of opinion and personality and perspectives and all that kind of stuff happens on on boards and commissions. Not regularly, but it does happen. So typically, what what happens in those cases is we really just try to to work through to have a constructive working relationship. Certainly, I don't think anyone is expecting that everyone will have the same opinion. That wouldn't actually be helpful. We know that's not the case in our community. So it'd be really helpful to have a diversity of viewpoints and experiences on this committee. And and one quick thing I would note is we we would actually likely have some some limits on the number of times that someone could be reappointed. That's actually true for other boards and commissions.
Right. Okay. One more question. In terms of the frequency of meetings, again, curious about the rationale there. I would personally prefer more meetings. I think if I remember reading correctly, that it's four times a year. I'm kind of curious as how we landed at that number? And what would be a thought about maybe increasing that to more frequency?
Yes, when the when the ad hoc committee was developing this, we were talking about getting it up and running and the likelihood that the group would perhaps meet more often when first convening in order to figure out what the work plan is. And then it might taper off after that. So it was a it was a rough estimate.
Okay, yeah, okay, interesting. And then my last question is about the Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee. Curious about the committed funds for the work that this that will be specifically focused on racial equity and inclusion. I know, obviously, in our last conversation, there was some discussion on committing funds to equity and inclusion. But I'm wondering, you know, if you could speak to that now and just in terms of how that's going to enable the work of that Subcommittee.
Who would like to address that question?
We we certainly have funding available to commit to diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. And part of what we're looking at is partnering with the committee to be able to create the work plan for that committee. We, in our very preliminary work thus far in diversity, equity, inclusion, as our new Equity Officer, Brianna Evans, has come on board, one of the things we've talked about is the external focused work and the internal focused work with respect to our role as an employer and dividing our time and attention between those different demands. And so we're we're in the process of developing a work plan focused on our internal work and looking forward to partnering with the Equity and Social Justice Committee to shape the work plan for the external work. And that work plan would drive how the investment of those dollars is pursued.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. So I'll just jump into a few comments. Again, thank you so much for this work. I think that, you know, this is truly, truly the important work of the city. I mean, there are lots of things we deal with, but I think that, given the events of this past year and, you know, just kind of things that have also happened in our community within the last year, we need to really be focusing on this and really bring in equity and social justice lens to all the conversations we have on all topics in the city. So I'm excited to be moving forward with this. I'm really excited to be joining Councilmember Ready and Councilmember Espinoza Garnica on the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. I think that the perspectives that will come from those particular colleagues will be very informed. And they will be very thoughtful and representative of various elements of our community. I just like to say that I think that we can continue to push the needle on the initiatives that the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee can handle. Of course, there are some meaty things in there. I particularly like the equity component of the cannabis licensure process. You know, this is not just about, you know, developing a high level equity plan for the cannabis licenses. It's about economic inclusion and economic development among communities of colors. We've been pushed to the margins in some cases, especially economically. You know, I look forward to working with city staff and determining this large, long-term visit vision for our community in terms of equity and social justice. And to my question, I absolutely want to be, you know, aggressive might be the right word, but I want to be thoughtful about the budgeting. I've been through processes in other organizations that focused on DNI. And essentially, they were lame ducks because there was no resource control or no resource commitment. And I really want to avoid that. I want to make sure that this Subcommittee and whoever on the city staff who's responsible for, you know, the day to day management of this is equipped to do an excellent job. You know, what I don't want to see is in a year from now, kind of thinking about things that we've put on the shelf or we've tabled because there just weren't enough resources. And I know we have resources because we just went through a budget review process. So I I don't think that will be a problem. So in terms of my thoughts on the advisory committee, I'll say that I I'm enthusiastic to be moving forward with this advisory committee. I I really think that it's the start of a renewed relationship between members of our public safety community as well as residents of Redwood City, specifically Redwood City residents of color. I am absolutely focused on making this committee as robust as possible within the context of a of an evolutionary process. I I expect that this advisory committee will change. It will evolve. It will take on more and more responsibilities as we start to really rightsize it for our community. And I think that that takes time. So I'm still, you know, enthusiastic that this committee will be able to do that work and will be able to do so effectively. You know, to, you know, the city manager's point, you know, all boards and commissions report into the City Council. And so it is really at the discretion of, you know, the colleagues here on on this call, you know, all the City Council, to make sure that we're looking at the meaningful work that's coming down the pike for this committee. And I think that we can do it. I think as long as we kind of stay true to the North Star of our values about inclusivity, about equity, we can we can do it and we can make the conversations and the impact in this committee substantive. I would be interested in hearing what my colleagues think. I would be interested in hearing what my colleagues think about lengthening the terms to four years. Again, obviously there are trade-offs and then also including more meetings. I don't think four times a year is enough. And in terms of Councilmember Espinoza-Garnica's suggestion about the committee's staff support being from outside the police department, I'd be open to hearing what my council colleagues think about that as well. You know, I can understand, you know, the point that she's making about having the staff counterpart be within the police department, especially for community members who may not be completely up to speed, let's call it, on the kind of public processes that we have within the city. So that could just provide a little bit more support, support that may not feel as kind of directly tied to the fate of a particular staff member within the police department. And so I think, you know, a discussion on that, I think would be an interesting one. So those are a few of my comments and I look forward to hearing from what everyone else has to say. Thank you.
I see Ms. Ramirez has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember Smith's first comment or point regarding the meetings, I just wanted to clarify that the committee, the staff report did identify kind of an estimate of meetings that the Police Advisory Committee would have in a year. And as Assistant City Manager Post Chair Flaherty mentioned, that was really an estimate, but the resolution itself actually doesn't have the amount of meetings. The resolution itself provides that the committee shall meet at such times as may be necessary. So depending on the work plan, what they have for that year, in order to do the business, the meetings will be set. Just wanted to make that clarification. Definitely you can provide direction to staff on how often you want. And especially once you have that work plan, there will be a better understanding of what needs to be done and what meetings will need to take place in order for that to happen. And that was the only legal point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that clarification. Ms. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to add one other comment. And I'm certainly hearing concerns raised by council members about how to make sure that a wide range of folks would feel comfortable being a part of that committee and certainly taking that to heart. I would observe, you know, one of the aspects of the council manager form of government is that the council sets a high-level policy. What is it that you would like to see? So for example, you'd like to see a wide range of folks feel comfortable serving in this on the community or serving on this kind of committee. But it's actually up to the city manager to make staff assignments. I need to make judgments based on our capacity, based on skill set, based on kind of a wide range of factors. And so I'm certainly listening to what you're saying. But I want to point out that there is some role here for the council really to be in the policy level and for staff to work on the administrative questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard. I have a new light and the light was fine when, when my room was, had a lot of light, but apparently it doesn't work right now. I agree with my colleagues that, that equity needs to be the lens through which we look at everything, every aspect of what we do in the city. So I wanted to just say that right off the bat that, that I agree with that, that point of view. I think this is a really good start, both with the Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee and with the Police Advisory Committee. And my own belief around having police involved in either or both of those committees is that we need to be really concerned if we have police officers. As someone who has been on several committees with members of our police force supporting the committees and giving us input and, and trying to help us actually with our own goals, with the goals of those committees, they were invaluable resources for us. And so I would be concerned if we have police officers that would not be able to serve on these committees. And, and I think that that's a good opportunity for members of our community to, to, to know our police officers on this level. If, if that's a person who feels uncomfortable with the police, then this is definitely where they need to be. And so that they can meet with them on a different, in a different environment. So that's that piece. I am in agreement with this being a very good start and with knowing that if there are extra meetings that are needed or if there are other responsibilities that needed, need to be added, those can be part of the work plan, those can be recommended by the committee members as we, as we work on that and, and as the Police Advisory Committee works on, works with staff. I would like for those council members who have recommendations on who they personally might want to suggest for the Police Advisory Committee, I wondered if staff might send council members a copy of that application for the Police Advisory Committee so that we might be able to pass it on to community members who, that we would like to recommend for this advisory committee. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. Thank you to staff for this work. I really appreciate.
Councilmember Ready, that's an excellent suggestion. I saw Ms. Flaherty nodding her head, so I believe that's going to be possible. So thank you. Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I want to first say thank you to the Council Ad Hoc Committee that worked on this last year. This is not an easy time last year. There were a lot of meetings, a lot of very hard conversations amongst council members as well as with the community. So there was a big lift last year. So thank you to the council members that were on the ad hoc committee last year. I think this is a great start at a high level. I look forward to the council Subcommittee or the Council Subcommittee on Equity and Social Justice and their work plan and what they bring back to council for consideration. It's a very important moment in time, a lot of hard work and some great work to be had going forward. With regard to the Police Advisory Committee, I think we need to leave it in the hands of the committee and the work plan that they bring to the council. For clarifying that this committee does report to the council. And through the annual work plan, they will set the charge with the council on what they'll be working on and what they'll be tackling. And I think with the two-year term to start, it's a good start. And if we need to change it, the council can change it. We've done that before. The council did that with other initial committees that had a two-year term and they were changed to four-year terms for continuity and other reasons. With this new committee and with the hard work the committee is going to be doing, one possible alternative is to have them come back at six months to give an update to the council rather than waiting a year, just so that we can check in and see where they're going, affirm the issues, affirm those priorities and things like that. The second thing is I would be very, very hesitant for the council to prescribe the number of meetings. I think the committee needs to do that themselves with their work plan and to have that alignment with staff resources. In my recruitment efforts on this Police Advisory Committee and trying to see who's interested, a number of concerns were raised about how many meetings? Are we meeting monthly? Are we meeting six times a year? I think the committee needs to judge that themselves rather than the council tell committee member applicants. With COVID still being around, with distance learning, with hybrid learning modules coming from different school districts, there are a lot on community members' plates right now still dealing with COVID. And to overly prescribe things without the committee's input amongst themselves, I think would be probably scare some applicants away. And we want a robust recruitment process. We want a lot of people to raise their hands like we saw earlier this evening so that we can make a good appointment to this committee so they can do some great work for our city. So those are my comments to, to what we have in front of us. Thank everyone that preceded and did this great work and hopefully we can continue the great work going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the things I heard that makes the most sense to me is how important that everything that we're doing in our city council work has to be looked at with an equity goal. I can't stress that enough. I know we talked about this at our retreat. So as we move forward, I just want to say how much work has gone into this and how we've really tried to look at every aspect of, of equity with the both committees and what they really mean and, and how are we going to evaluate these? So one of my questions is, and I just want to clarify because I really respect the comments made by my colleague, Espinoza Garnica about the process. So who, who do we? How do we actually, how are we going to evaluate this? How often are we going to evaluate it? Because when we look at, is it going to be one year for the Subcommittee on the Council? And is it going to be two years for the other committee that's the Police Advisory Committee? You know, those are, those are questions that I think are important. But in this process and as we came to this agreement or as we came to these models after looking at many of them, I think we need to have a timeline on how we're going to evaluate these and, you know, what the process is going to be. And one of the things that's not clear, wasn't clear to me is the evaluation process, so the application process. So we require applications and then will each council member report or ask for or appoint members within their district and the at-large? So that was one of my first questions on how that process is, and I have a few other questions. So if I can get that one answered first.
Who would like to take that question? Ms. Diaz?
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in and then Michelle may want to add in as well. So the thought was that the application process and the opportunity would be announced very broadly. And actually, we would appreciate community members' help in getting the word out. And from there, once the applications were received, the council would receive all of those applications, potentially have an interview process. And then each council member would make one appointment. So you could choose among any of those who had applied. And then as a body, the council would select four more individuals from that pool to serve as at-large members. So that's the, the selection process as envisioned now. In terms of evaluating the committee's work, that's, that's a great question. And actually, I don't think the ad hoc committee talked about that. We actually don't have a process for, you know, evaluating our other boards and commissions and figuring out if, you know, any of them, you know, should sunset, the ones that are optional. So that might be something that, say, the Governance Committee should, should take up at some point. And additionally, as, you know, Councilmember G mentioned, it's certainly possible that we could come back with more of an interim report at six months versus a year.
Well, given all the different options that we have and knowing that many cities will be working on committees such as these, I'd like to make sure that we have, and I think this committee is different than other ad hoc committees in the sense that it's, it's timely, it's necessary. And we're not sure if this is the right way to move forward. And so how do we stop and evaluate and say, you know what, this has worked or this is not working? We need to go to a different model. And, and I'd like to see a shorter timeline just on, on the importance of this one. And I understand that we will start at taking, if we agree, we'll start sending applications in March. And how soon will these committees be able to start?
So for the Police Advisory Committee, the appointment process then would happen at a council meeting in April. And so we just will need to schedule that in with other work that's, that's taking place, particularly if we need to schedule an additional meeting for interviews. So that would then mean that committee might start early May, would, would likely be the starting timeframe. And then in terms of the Equity and Social Justice Committee, I would see that could start late March, early April.
And I think I heard, Melissa, you talked a little bit about it, but I think it needs to be very clear on who these, both of these committees report to. You know, so that the, the public knows or the Subcommittee knows who they're going to report to. Ultimately, I think it is the council that, you know, we need to make some of these decisions. Is there an opportunity for these two committees to have joint meetings? I think that might be an important step for, and, and down the line, it doesn't have to be soon, obviously, but to be able to have joint meetings, just as we do with other groups within our organization so that we really evaluate, is it making a difference? You know, are we looking at the data? What does that data look like? What does Redwood City need to do to, to change things and what is it already doing well? So those are all points that I'd like to see us move forward to, you know, within the scope of the work that each committee is doing. So as far as the questions, I do agree with the responsibilities of the Council Subcommittee and also the proposed appointment of the Subcommittee on Equity and Social Justice and the Police Advisory Committee. And I don't see any amendments on any of this except for the fact that we need to have the next steps and what the process is and what outcomes do we really want to do. So a way of evaluating, maybe that will come out of, you know, some of the first meetings of those, both of those committees. Okay, what are we going to, to agree on and, you know, how are we going to measure this? And what kind of outcomes and how soon can we report to the council? And I know that the Equity and Social Justice Committee having a one-year term is because there's so many of us that want to be on it. And so it gives an opportunity for folks to really be a part of the process. I'm not sure, you know, and the committee on the, the Police Advisory Committee can also evaluate and say, you know what, we need to have more than two years and this is not enough for us. Or this is great, we need to have more people and to be a part of this. So I just want to ask about some evaluation measures as we move forward with all of, both of these committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, such phenomenal suggestions from all of my colleagues. I wanted to start by saying thank you to Ms. Flaherty for the presentation I thought was really excellent. There was so much background information there. I have several questions as well. You know, first of all, first of all, I have a comment following Councilwoman Aguirre's remarks. I, I do think there is something there to this notion of the commission oversight. We've done so much as a council to update and modernize our practices around the council, but we have not made those same actions towards our boards and commissions. You know, as an example, I believe we've had the same chair and vice chair, same three people have been chair and vice chair of our planning commission in the eight years that I've served the city. So what are we doing to, to make sure that we are moving people through and more people are getting exposed to leadership opportunities and things like that? So I think there is something there for our Governance Committee to be taking a look at. I have a question about how the, the Police Committee with the nomination process. So one potential problem I see is say we see a group of candidates and several of us serve at large presently, so we don't serve in, in districts. What if we all pick the same one candidate?
So, so first, there's not an expectation that you will make an appointment necessarily by a district for those who are voted by district. And the resolution and the discussion of the ad hoc committee was really just to make sure that there are a wide range of perspectives in the folks who are appointed to this committee. So I would, I guess, just advise as, as council members to, to have a couple backups, maybe seven backups in case you find that your, your first six choices were taken by other council members and nominated to the committee. I'm hoping there's going to be a great deal of interest. And particularly, we'll be working to get the word out broadly to folks and I'm, I'm certain you will as well. So hopefully we'll have a good, robust pool for you to choose from.
And so different than a normal board or commission, then you're saying we could effectively help source candidates ourselves? People could read, reach out to us directly or how would you?
Certainly you can encourage people to apply and I think that often happens now with boards and commissions.
Okay, did we at all consider staggered terms instead of just everything two-year? Like perhaps the council appointees two-year and then the, the four at-large, four-year, anything like that? Did we look at anything like that?
The committee didn't discuss that. I think that's a good suggestion to consider.
Yeah, okay. I just think it's, it's helpful to hear Councilmember G's experience from having started a committee in the past. It is a little awkward that everyone starts at the same time and then would end at the same time. So maybe for consistency, having there be staggered is something I would be supportive of. And then in terms of the oversight with this question of the, the city manager versus the police chief, I, I understand sort of both sides of this argument. You know, on the one hand, you know, there is something about having the subject matter expertise and, and that sort of understanding, you know, and that sort of understanding, you know. Melissa, our, our city manager, Ms. Diaz, very knowledgeable, but that is not your day-to-day, right, is our policing work. On the other hand, I understand the community expressed concern regarding this not being performative and that there's like a path for escalation to the council. So I'll flag that as a concern that I share. I would say around joint meetings, I do think is a, a potential solve there where there is council access as well. And I think that there's really no coincidence that these two entities are really starting on the same evening. So I think it makes perfect sense for them to have some sort of, of link as we move through this, this journey. And I think that's it. I really want to wish our, our committee, our committee much success. It's a, it's a big job taking something like this on. And to all three of you, I wish you success and I'm eager to see what you, what you propose and what you come back with.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz, you have your hand raised?
Yes, just very briefly, I did want to note that the resolutions do specify the terms. And so if there's a suggestion to have staggered terms, that would need to be a motion.
Thank you. Well, I will wait to hear if there's other council interest in that before any motions made.
Thank you so much. Well, I'll just say thank you, Ms. Flaherty, and to the city manager and to our police chief for working on these reports. I really appreciate it. They were very thorough and well-done. And I appreciated the dialogue by our council members to kind of flesh out additional ideas that came with it. I am in support of staggered terms. You don't want to be having a whole group leaving at one time. That never works well for anyone. I agree staggered terms would be quite good. And we can figure that out since it's such a large number we're discussing. It could be even staggered in threes or just two, whatever. I'm open to it, very open to the possibility. I'm also, as far as a joint meeting in the future, I think that's an excellent idea. Since they are starting at this time together, I think that would be great to hear their input after a certain period of time has gone by, hear back from them after they have a joint meeting and see how, how they, their different work plans have worked out and what they share in common and what different ideas each one has. I would say that the number of meetings, I would leave that up to the work plan that's developed and the committee and staff. I would imagine there'll be more meetings at first, and that's fine. It's, it's what can be handled, but also the amount of work that you need to do with the work plan that you develop. So I think this is an excellent start. I just wanted to say that I'm just so glad we're moving forward with this. I really am very pleased with how we're beginning, working together in trying to get this started. I said this is going to be a difficult time for us. We're being asked to examine our consciences and be vulnerable. This is new for all of us. But I was so moved, I have to share with you, I was so moved by Amanda Gorman, the 23-year-old LA native who was a Harvard graduate and the former National Youth Poet Laureate. She spoke at the inauguration of the president on January 20th. And what she said has so resonated with me. Being American is more than a pride we inherit. It's the past we step into and how we repair it. Those are powerful words, and I feel that's what we're doing as we go forward. So again, thank you to our staff and those who volunteer to serve. God bless you, thank you. This is going to be, I think, a positive step forward for our city. So thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion from a council member. Vice Mayor Hale, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. I actually wanted to add on to your comment about Amanda Gorman because she had just shared this week on her Instagram page that that same woman who's a poet laureate and Harvard grad was tailed by a security guard on her walk home and, and said that she looked suspicious. And she had to show her keys to be buzzed into her apartment. And he did not apologize. And she said this was her reality, that one day you're called an icon and the next day you're called a threat. And so I think you couldn't have picked a better example of why we're doing this work and why we're, you know, hoping to improve the lives of, of our residents of color.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Did you want to make a motion or?
I would be happy to, however, I see my colleague has her hand raised. So perhaps she has a comment or question.
Yeah, if it's okay, can I make another comment?
Certainly.
Okay, cool. It's, it's with what's been said. You know, I just wanted to share that with the thoughts about having expert, right? Because there was multiple things that were said. On one side, you know, already shared that, well, it'd be the best time to learn about the police if you were afraid of them or were, wanted to approach one and know more about them, you know, by serving on this committee. I think that'd be the worst time. And we got to think about it, how this is work and how this is work is very sensitive. This work is about, you know, accountability. It's not like meeting someone at a bar or, and it's not just work, like the day-to-day stuff. I think the stuff is about accountability measures. Because what we want to do is ensure that the police don't continue to abuse the power that they have. Because the reason we are having the accountability, in my eyes, I perceive this response to creating an accountability measures because police have been wielded so much power and that they are using all of it. And that we need to look into things like, such as do funding and then also ensuring that there are ways to procedurally hold accountable people who violate our human rights. And so beyond that, getting to, this is an opportunity again to know someone. I think we ought to treat it with much sensitivity. Sorry, it says my internet connection is unstable. Can y'all hear me? Okay, yeah.
I can hear you.
Thank you so much. It's just that there's such instability and mistrust. And I think there's a lot of misguided, even with good intention, misguided efforts from the, from the police department to improve upon, to prove on the efforts that they're making. And so I think we really need to have folks that are from the community outside of that space to really step in and make this, to start calling the shots, because so much of the police force has been used and abused, even in our city. And I think also on the fact that we need a professional. Well, I think this is, I still, we have a great professional, like of the person who hires the chief of police would be a great professional to also deal with this. And I think beyond just having the person who deals with it more day-to-day, I think it's important to think about, well, in my, in my mind, it's, it's greater that having the city manager be the person to address will then allow more people to apply who have been part of this experience and from marginalized communities themselves to feel less threatened to be part of this, this accountability system, this whole committee that we're building, to, to come forward and talk about these things that, that they've seen or witnessed or have heard from other people experience and, and take part in this initiative. Because I do not, it's greater than whatever loss we can imagine from having the city manager deal with what the city, the, the chief of police would be dealt with in this current resolution. You know, it will be different. Basically, city manager's a different day-to-day job, but I think being the person who hires them, they, they do a good job of that, of keeping them accountable. They are their boss, you know? And I don't think, and I think it would then be a great remedy. And so that's just another, I just want to throw those thoughts out, out there to push on that idea, I guess. But I really appreciate the, the opportunity to just express my thoughts with y'all. So, you know, I share in good faith.
Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to move the, the resolutions for establishing this subcommittee and the police advisory committee as presented, but with those suggestions that the, the council appointees be two-year terms and the at-large be four-year terms and that the references to the number of meetings be removed from the resolutions.
Second?
Well, point of order. Since I also made two amendments, can I still vote to make those? Oh, so not amendments, oh, they are amendments. When, since I made two motions from the beginning, can I also make those motions after Ready's motion?
Well, Councilmember Ready has made an emotion with additions to the motion. And Vice Mayor Hale, I believe we need to vote on that. If you would like to make another motion, you certainly could.
Would it, okay, because I would like to vote on the motion as.
There's a motion on the floor right now, so why don't we take care of that?
Okay, okay.
Because otherwise, we're going to get very confused. So we have a motion by Councilmember Ready, seconded by Vice Mayor Hale, with the additions about staggered terms. Is that all clear?
Actually, Mayor, if I could clarify, I'm not sure I quite followed that. So did I understand, Councilmember Ready, that you were voting, your motion was for both resolutions at this time?
Yes, both resolutions, but the, but the adjustment was for staggered terms for the police advisory committee.
And that would be that the council appointees, so the individual council appointees would serve two-year terms each? And the four members who serve the police advisory committee as at-large members, those would be four-year terms? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And is that with the understanding that people can reapply at the end of their term? That's, since it's all brand-new?
That would be my expectation. That's, that's standard with our boards and commissions.
Great, okay, thank you. So I think we're clarified. I'd like to ask our city clerk if she would call the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I see our city manager has her hand raised.
Sorry, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yeah, so I would just like to make a resolution or to pass the resolution with the motions of the, to create it without the, the police staff and without the chief of police.
Okay, a motion has been made to create the police advisory committee without the police chief and without police staff.
If it helps, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, if you had something to add to that, I was just trying to frame it.
Yeah, I don't know if it helps making it two separate motions. I don't know, but as is, it's fine, I guess, right?
Oh, no, it's fine. I think it's fine as is. You want to make a motion to have the establishment of the police advisory committee, but without the oversight of the police chief as well as police staff.
Thank you, yes, that is it. And then I do have the other motion to make a resolution that we look at investigative and disciplinary models as well throughout this.
Okay, a motion. A motion has been made by Councilmember Lizette Espinoza Garnica. Is there a second? And I see the hand of our city attorney, Ms. Ramirez.
You know, actually, I'll let you keep going. I'm actually, I'm a little bit confused because I thought the motion's already been made to act on both resolutions. And so I'm just trying, I, it's my understanding, the city council has already acted to adopt both resolutions. The resolution establishing the subcommittee and the resolution establishing the police advisory committee with those, with that one specific amendment to the police advisory committee that the at-large members be four-years rather than two-year terms.
Thank you. I, I wasn't really clear if this motion was something that we could vote on. So it, I think what we passed includes what we already discussed, which would be, that doesn't mean that when we go under review at maybe six months, as was member, mentioned by Councilmember G, that we couldn't revisit and say, this is working or this is not working. That certainly could be a possibility.
Yeah, but can we have like a revote then? Because I didn't understand that was what we were voting on. Because given the instruction of the mayor, I thought we were able to make my motion afterwards.
So I wasn't, I wasn't sure what your motion was going to be, so. But I, I know, I don't believe we can remake the motion. But I'll turn that over to our city attorney and ask for her sage advice.
So the city council can reconsider the action if that is something that's of interest for the, of the council. So there can be a motion for reconsideration and then you can restart the process.
Well, I'd like to reconsider this being that I didn't think that, I thought I had made clear, I had first made my motion when I was first speaking, the motions I wanted to make. And then Diana Ready made her motions and we voted on her. And when I tried to interrupt, we, I was told to wait when I wanted to make those motions. So I just thought I would vote because I thought we were voting on my motions. So I think, I don't think the mayor knew what I was trying to say, but I was trying to make that motion. I thought I made myself very clear. And I didn't realize I wouldn't be able to make my motions without interrupting them again, because I didn't want to further interrupt, because I thought I was going to be too rude. But I would really appreciate if we would do this all over again, because I greatly misunderstood. And I don't think the mayor understood my intentions either.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, would you like to make a motion for reconsideration and see if you can get a second and if your colleagues would agree to that?
Yes, please, I would like to make a motion to reconsider greatly, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second? I see Councilmember Aguirre's hand up.
I was going to ask if, since we've already made a motion and passed the motion, if we could actually revisit when we evaluate the possibility of, or the evaluation of what it is to have police involved in the committees and not involved in just how, how that's working since we've already passed the motion. So that, that be part of the evaluation, you know, within the six months.
Okay. Actually, that's what I thought that, when I said that, that when we talked about an evaluation sooner rather than later, I thought in six months' time, once the work plan is developed and they have some meetings, we'd be able to ask those questions and evaluate how effective, how effective is the committee with the people that are working with that person?
What I greatly wanted, what I greatly didn't want to stall, however, is just the motions to vote, like the option to vote on getting the police staff to be replaced by other city staff. Like I greatly was hoping to have the opportunity to vote on that, and I made that very clear.
Yes, I, I hear you, I hear you. However, if you don't have a second for your motion, then there is no vote.
Okay, I didn't realize that we were asking for that. Okay, so no one?
No, I was asking if anyone would like to second your motion. If there is no second, then we cannot vote on it.
Okay, okay, I understand, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for the confusion there. But I do agree with Councilmember Aguirre that we can have that evaluation and discussion when we review the committee at an agreed-upon time in the future. Okay. So I think, Councilmember Aguirre, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I, I just wanted to respect my colleague's motion and the fact that we've already voted and there was some confusion around it, so that perhaps we can make that a priority when we evaluate this in six months and bring that forward.
Thank you. I, I think that would be best. And, and thank you for your understanding, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, I appreciate it. I know this is all new and it can get very confusing. It's new for us, too. This is breaking new ground. So good, I'm glad that we move on now. We move on to item. Here we go. Item A. Item 8A, matters of council interest. And that is the future consideration of hazard pay for grocery workers within the city. Our city manager, Melissa Stevenson Diaz, will give an overview of the referral. And I would like to say that our council member Espinoza Garnica brought the referral to us. So Ms. Diaz, would you like to give an overview of the referral?
Yes, I'll just give a very brief introduction and then invite Councilmember Espinoza Garnica to speak to it as it is for referral. Mostly for council's benefit and the public's benefit, I wanted to. Mostly for council's benefit and the public's benefit, I wanted to clarify that the referral process is one way that the city council provides direction to staff to work on a policy matter. And so at this time, the question that's before the city council is whether you want to direct staff to move forward with developing an urgency ordinance for the city council to discuss at a future meeting about hazard pay for grocery workers working in Redwood City. And as framed in the referral from Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, the recommendation is that that ordinance would be based on an ordinance that the city of South San Francisco has developed. And there are also provisions for some additional benefits aside from hazard pay. It's noted in the staff report that there has not been staff analysis at this point, and so tonight, we're not prepared to provide information about other approaches that have been taken in other communities or give you any information about what South San Francisco's ordinance would mean for Redwood City. The threshold question for you tonight really is whether or not you'd like staff to do that level of analysis and bring that back to you for future consideration. So so that's, that's the question. And it'd be probably most appropriate for Councilmember Espinoza Garnica to speak more toward her reason for bringing this referral to you. Thank you.
Hello, yes. Hi, so I wanted to raise this by stating. I opened this, I wanted to open this first by stating that, you know, I definitely want to adopt an ordinance for us that that well suits us and is as progressive as as South City's example. South City is definitely mentioned here because they did stand out as the first city to move for hazard pay in our county. And it seemed like we would have waited on the county to to vote on that hazard pay. But it seems that with greater delays, you know, and more and more cities, further delays by the county and more and more cities, and now starting in our county, we ought to start to pay what people are missing. It's been over 150 days that people have been without hazard pay, who were previously receiving hazard pay. And under this new ordinance, it would be hopefully $5, like in many other cities. And the reason I brought up South City is because it has great examples to to the benefit of workers, because it is also applying four hours of paid leave for vaccine appointments. It gives also. This gives a credit, this pays credit for employers who continue to pay it currently in our county. Only Luckies is currently continuing to pay hazard pay. They never stopped continuing to pay hazard pay. So it'd be implementing something that would also give credit to those who who didn't decide to cut wages, which are so greatly needed during a pandemic. Our essential workers that this would apply to would be groceries, grocery workers and drugstore workers that have 300 employees nationwide and approximately 10,000, 10,000 square feet. And and apply to places that even have about per 85,000 square feet, 85,000 square feet, at least 10% of groceries. So this would be major for majorly just affecting the big tax, or sorry, the big corporate drugstores, grocery stores, and hopefully would exclude small business and would definitely exclude businesses, small businesses, including franchises. So I think adopting something that is similar to South San Francisco that stands out from other cities would be really great for those reasons. The paid time off, the credit that's given back, $5 hourly rate. It's currently a grocery stores. Workers are experiencing COVID at like a one to five, like one in five grocery workers or drugstore workers context COVID, and 75% of those are asymptomatic. So this ordinance, as it is, it is targeting those who have the highest exchange, basically highest like rates of COVID, like basically contact, highest rates of contact due to their jobs with also the lowest pay. So hopefully, this will extend further on to to other essential workers because, you know. I know that it doesn't quite apply to, trying to essentially show that people have some money in case they get sick or have to take some time off, because we don't have a single payer healthcare system. So this is a bigger issue, not having this amount of money and missing work means not having enough money to pay for rent. So this is really essential for our folks, essentially, especially our essential workers, predominantly low-income black and brown people, and they are experience the highest rates, they are experienced disproportionately high rates of of COVID, because they feel such great source of our essential workers, our service workers. And so it is a great need to our most vulnerable folks that we pay a hazard pay as an emergency ordinance. If we had waited for the county, even if they had voted on that, it would have not been as soon as possible. So another thing that I think may or may not be unique to South City, but I would like to have an effect is that it is retroactive or a retroback payment to to hopefully as much as we can from the time missed. I know in South City that they retroded back to like a couple of months, like two months to like February. So learning all that, I'd love to know more about. But yeah, paying people for the time that they weren't paid, paying them for the their having to go out to work. You know, they never stopped going to work, our essential workers, like our grocery workers or drugstore workers never stopped going to work. And they were deemed essential because they they allow society to function smoothly. They allow us not to all riot in chaos. So and they don't have enough resources for themselves if they ever do get sick, because we know that the risk of COVID is very lethal. It also, even if it's not, has long-term chronic issues. And we know that insurance companies aren't very then it's not affordable for people with chronic issues. So I, this is all, this is part of a bigger bigger problem. And this is just one solution to the bigger problem that we have going on. And I really urge us to move it as an emergency ordinance to get this one as soon as possible, to start paying back for the times that they've missed. Not getting paid for hazard pay and to also encourage them to get vaccinated with paid time off, and also to reward folks for paying hazard pay during the pandemic. I would love to compile a list of all the grocers that like are in Redwood City and this applies to, and drugstores, of course. Because we're trying to keep people alive ultimately. This is not just about giving people money. It's about ensuring that people have their lives, you know, like and access to to emergency funds or to the needs that may come up, because things are very uncertain right now. This is a pandemic and there is just so much distress you could only imagine going through the minds of grocery workers and and all essential workers right now. So so this is why I put it onto the table. I'm hoping that we can pass it the way I described it, or, you know, and we continue to discuss it. So yes, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. So this has been brought as a referral, and now I'd like to have council questions and discussion or or discussion to see if we'd like to direct staff to develop an ordinance. So who would like to begin? I see Councilmember Aguirre's hand raised. But first, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Ms. Ramirez, you have your hand raised? Did you want to clarify something said?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make sure there's an opportunity for public comment. I didn't hear you mention clarifying questions, and so I thought maybe now is an opportunity for public comment before council members comment and determine whether to bring, give direction to staff to work on this.
Okay, I didn't have it here that we were doing public comments.
I'm sorry about that, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Let's see if, I believe, right now I see two people who may be interested in commenting to this referral. We have quite a few people who want to speak to this. I wanted to clarify, is it matters of council interest? Is that one of the items that we say under public comment, that that's when people should speak? I'm just trying to clarify for myself, because I I thought I still would allow people to make a comment tonight to this item, because I'm not sure that.
I think, Mayor, that you I don't know that that was clear at the beginning of the meeting, but that's definitely something that we can make clear in the future to have all of those public comments. But definitely an opportunity for public comment on this should be done.
Okay, well, it does say, I said it twice, all public comment on council consent, matters of council interest and items not on tonight's agenda taken during item number five. But I think we just need to make that clearer in the future.
For referrals, that's what I would recommend. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Let's just make it clear for a referral, we possibly consider that differently. So no problem. But I do see that we have nine speakers and we do have a very, very full agenda. So I am going to ask each speaker to please keep it to two minutes so that we can be sure that we get to every item on the agenda this evening that all has equal weight and importance. So I'll call the speakers first. I'll call you two at a time. My first speaker is Richard Hedges and my second speaker is John Gomez. If you could please stick to two minutes, we'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. I've been in the retail industry since 1958. I heard my international president speak recently on CBS, who said that we had had 77,000 members infected and 6,000 die locally between our two locals in the Bay Area. We've had 3,000 infected. Our members take this home to their family members and their loved ones. And many of them are paid around 17 bucks an hour. They work very hard. Some of the work is heavy. It's all fast. And I don't think they're compensated without hazard pay for what they do, but we really need to acknowledge that they're helping keep us all fed and they're doing it under a great deal of stress. And we need to show them our gratitude by giving them hazard pay. I know that some city council has been worried about being sued. The Grocers Association always sues slap suits. As a union representative, I've dealt with this. They've been, never been successful. They weren't successful in our TRO. And I don't think that you have to worry about that. So I would urge you to take this forward tonight and make sure that everybody in your community understands how you appreciate the 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 work that's being done to keep everybody fed. Thank you, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. I want to say at this time, our last speaker will be Leon Wong. And we have eight speakers at this time. My next speaker is John Gomez and then Tamara Bell Bard.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council and city staff for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Gomez. I am an essential grocery worker and a member of USCW Local Five. I would like to speak today in support of the hazard pay. You know, since the beginning of the pandemic, we have continued to go into work. You know, we are now working with risks that we did not face when we originally signed up for the job. You know, we we risk bringing this, you know, getting sick, we risk our families getting sick, bringing it home to our families. You know, we deal with anti-maskers. We get coughed on, we've been spat at, cussed at, disrespected. A lot of us have gotten sick. Some of us have even died. You know, hazard pay would go a long way in not only giving us a peace of mind, but a cushion, you know, to ensure that we could pay our rent, to ensure that we can pay our bills, to ensure that we could pay for medicines if we get sick. You know, these companies, these large grocery stores are making money hand over fist. And rather than than helping their their workforce out, you know, they're they're compensating their executives and and, you know. It's a, it's clear that they can do this. Lucky Save Mart is a perfect example. They've continued to do so throughout the entirety of the pandemic without cutting hours or firing people, closing stores, you know. So we know these companies can do this. So I implore the city council to please take this forward and eventually pass it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Again, I can't express the importance of this ordinance would be to grocery workers. Thank you.
You're welcome. My next speaker is Tamara Bell Bard and then Colin Park.
Hello, this is Tamara Bell Bard. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you for listening to us. And I just wanted to agree with everybody. I'm a grocery worker. I've been living in Redwood City for 30 years and working in grocery for almost 20. And we have been dealing with a lot of stuff and I would love it if you guys would consider paying us our hazard pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Park and then Amanda Doherty.
Hi. I'm, I'm, I'm one of these people that the only impact I've had from the pandemic is just annoyance. I haven't had, you know, to lose a work. I haven't gotten sick. I haven't had to physically go to the office, none of that. And and so I just want to say I'm really in favor of our adopting this, this referral. I'm willing to pay more taxes for it. You know, I'm willing to write checks, you know, just to a special fund to help grocery workers. I'm just, I, that's all I wanted to say. I'm just, I'm really in favor of this and I'm willing to write checks. So I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Amanda Doherty and then Brandon Enriquez.
I'd like to agree with the prior speakers. As a healthcare worker, I feel strongly that grocery workers are, you know, have literally kept us alive during this pandemic. They're right up there with the healthcare workers and even more so, because in the hospital, at least we have a lot of policies and procedures that keep us safe, but the grocery workers are really on the front line. You know, they've been at the most risk and they're among the lowest paid workers in our community. So I really feel strongly that they deserve hazard pay. Like the previous speaker, I would write a check, I would pay higher taxes. I am totally behind them. I'd also like to point out that what happened earlier Lizette Espinoza Garnica did ask to make a motion and she was told to wait. And so I feel that it was wrong. What was done to her there, I think it should have been reconsidered, given that there was a possible discrepancy in in the, in the procedure there. Thank you. That's all.
My next speaker is Brandon Enriquez and then Pat in the House.
Hi, Council, thank you for your time. I, first, going off of what the previous speakers mentioned, I want to point to Robert's Rules of New Order, which is what, you know, the council is universal rules for parliamentary procedures. Councilmember Lizette raised a point of order, and a point of order may be raised if the rules appear to have been broken. This may interrupt a speaker during debate or anything else if the breach of the rules warrants it. The point is resolved before business continues. When Councilmember Espinoza Garnica raised that point, they were told to wait, and that is a rules violation. And I would hope the council, like, improves and like their parliamentary procedure and make it more equitable and not, you know, steamroll the council members. And moving on to the agenda item, as a member of the Silicon Valley Democratic Socialism of America, I stand. And moving on to the agenda item, as a member of the Silicon Valley Democratic Socialism of America, I stand. With our workers, especially our grocery workers who have been in the front lines of this global pandemic. Labor. Workers create all. All. All wealth is created by labor and so we should reward their labor accordingly and by. By compensating them, especially in dangerous situations like COVID. And I hope the council considers this and votes on it as soon as possible. In addition to future measures that would also extend this to all essential workers, not just grocery workers.
My next speaker is Pat in the House and then Erin Chaser. Chaser.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Just checking. So I'm in favor of the hazard pay for grocery workers. Actually, I'm a favorite of hazard pay also for people that wait tables in restaurants, whether they're indoors or on the sidewalk or in the middle of the street. Back in the day, high school times, I worked at a grocery store. And there's a lot of sort of opportunity for people to touch things. And then whatever they touch, I touch, whatever the shopper touches to put the item in the cart, I touch, putting it in the shopping bag and their cart. Somewhat of an observer, close observer of everywhere I go these days, particularly services like the bank or Home Depot and so forth. I look at the grocery store and I notice the Plexiglas that's on the counter to guard the people. Running the cash register. However, the person sacking the groceries does not have such Plexiglas in front of him or her. The person puts the stuff I touched into a bag and into my cart. So we have opportunities to share. Sorry, mom's a biologist, okay? So we think of how germs are passed between items, right? One person to another. And. I. Agree with the notion that the lawyers should put this all in writing and bring it to the next meeting so people can read it and pass it. Thank you.
My next speaker is Erin Chaser and then Leon Wong is my last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, council members and staff. My name is Erin Chaser and I'm here with the San Mateo Labor Council, representing over 100 unions and over 8,000 working people in the county. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening and I'm thankful that you've chosen to agendize this for discussion. Since day one of this pandemic, our grocery and drugstore workers have been on the front lines with some of the greatest degree of exposure. Over 2,000 members of our own UFCW Locals Five and Six Forty Eight, which represent grocery and drugstore workers in the area, have contracted COVID-19. And the national infection rate in the industry is one worker out of every five. Chain stores continue to make record profits, none of which, with the exception of Lucky's, they invest into the workers that make that profit possible. These employees who make an average of $15 and $19 per hour and who are physically interacting with the public throughout the entirety of their eight-hour shifts. Have taken on extra job duties due to COVID protocols without additional compensation. They're faced with customers who refuse to follow mask mandates or respect social distancing. They have long ago exhausted any paid leave to care for themselves or their family members that have become exposed to or contract COVID. And they're enduring huge health and safety risks to provide uninterrupted food and medication access to our communities. For these reasons, we are asking you to institute hazard pay for these workers. We respectfully request that you consider an emergency ordinance that guarantees $5 per hour for food and drugstore workers and businesses employing 500 or more workers nationwide. Regardless of where they are employed, with applicability including retail food establishments with 10% or more of square footage dedicated to non-taxable food items. The ordinance can sunset 120 days from implementation, which will hopefully allow all of these workers time to get the protection of being vaccinated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My last speaker is Leon Wong.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Leon with UFCW Local Five, representing thousands of grocery and pharmacy workers in the Bay Area. I wanted to voice out for our essential workers regarding hazard pay. Hazard pay is not just an appreciation for their service to the community during the pandemic. But most importantly, these extra dollars per hour will help them buy extra PPEs that their employers fail to provide. Besides helping them with their bills, debt, buy more food for their family, and that makes a huge difference for the workers. Grocery store and drugstore workers have the highest risk of COVID-19 exposure when compared to bank workers and workers in other industries. Due to the high volume of customers they encounter in person every day. The essential workers face so much difficulties in trying to stay safe, which added more stress at work every day, just so that we can bring food to our table. And to provide medication to those who depend on it. These workers didn't give up serving our community, even when facing the risk of COVID exposure for them and their family. So to show appreciation for these ten heroes for all that they do for our community. We respectfully request that you consider an urgency ordinance for hazard pay of $5 per hour for our grocery and drugstore workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thank to all of you for your comments. If you are not able to provide public comment tonight, please email your comments to the city council at council@redwoodcity.org. And they will be entered into the record. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to council discussion. I'd like to start with council member Ready.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking that we would be making a that I would be making a motion. So I will just say very simply that I support the recommendation to direct staff to develop an urgency ordinance and to bring it back to us at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Aguirre.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my colleague Espinoza Garnica for bringing this forward. As we look at this, I want to make sure that we clarify, first of all, what a referral is. This is not common within our city council meetings, so I think it's been a little confusing and when we vote, who where the public can speak. So as we get these, and I think it's important that we have that opportunity as council members to do referrals and to bring things that are important to us. Some of the things I think we need to get information on is how are other cities and businesses being affected by this? How are we going to evaluate and get, you know, information on what this means? Which stores specifically in Redwood City are effective? How are smaller businesses having to respond to this? I think we need a lot of that information. In fact, we need to, I really appreciate the data that was given to us by the local unions. And also want to look at maybe the chambers or the businesses within our city. So what does it really mean within our city? You know, which stores are we talking about? Which businesses? And, you know, what is going to be the effect on that? So those are some of the things as we move forward to reviewing or studying this that I'd like to for us to look at.
Thank you. Council member Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So I'd like to second Councilwoman Aguirre's. Thanks to Councilmember Espinoza Garnica for bringing this up as a referral. I think obviously as we're seeing kind of the wave of adoption of this had these hazard pay ordinances across the state of California. It, I believe, obliges us to at least have a look at this. So I'm really looking forward to moving forward and thinking about. You know, what the implications for our city is overall and to echo another point that Councilwoman Aguirre made. I think that we really need to focus on rightsizing this ordinance, should it should we move forward with it. To, you know, really account for small businesses that could be impacted by this. As well as, of course, the empowerment that will come along with it for our essential workers. So I just want to encourage the city staff, should we decide to move forward with it tonight, that that tension is certainly something that we want to flush out. And I think as much detail as possible to Councilwoman Aguirre's point is great, you know, even down to the store level. So just wanted to leave it at that, but I'm really happy that we're going to be moving forward with considering it.
Thank you. Council member G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica for bringing this forward. I am open to considering this, but as Councilmember Aguirre said and Councilmember Smith shared, I would want a lot more data. I think their conversation from listening to some of the speakers. Some of the businesses that were referenced, or I think what is termed as either nationwide businesses or publicly traded companies versus franchises or locally owned or independent. You know, independent grocers. And so if we do ask staff to move forward with this, I would like a list of all businesses that would be affected by such a policy in Redwood City. We need to, as Councilmember Smith said, take a look at rightsizing this to make sure that we are not. We don't have unintended consequences occur. Redwood City has a rich history of local businesses and small businesses that support our city and support our neighborhoods. I would not want to see them penalized just because of a nationwide application of an ordinance. And then when I've asked these cities that have gone this route, I get various questions and various answers to my question is. What has the outreach been to the Latinx and Asian markets? And to a city that didn't do the data, all I got were shrugs. And so we would, I would want to make sure that we had a robust outreach program to make sure we talk to the business owners. And that I don't consider putting it on e-news or our city Facebook site outreach. We need to be boots on the ground, talk to these business owners to really understand the impacts of something like this. And not focus on sales as much as we need to focus on net profits during this pandemic. While sales may have gone up, that doesn't mean they made more money necessarily because of the supply chain and logistics issues. So there wouldn't need to be for me to say yes to an ordinance. A lot more data as how it would apply to Redwood City and our businesses here.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to my colleague for bringing this forward. She actually brought this at our recent council offsite. And I think at the time, there were high hopes that the county would take action countywide, and unfortunately, that did not happen. And so it's completely appropriate to be taking it city by city now. And I'm glad to be joining the ranks of South San Francisco, San Mateo, and other cities across the state. My family has all worked in in this field. My dad was in the grocery. My sister was in a pharmacy for years and they were both in their unions. And I really. I just empathize with what workers are going through right now, and this is a this is a small piece. I thought it was well phrased that this is this is just one piece of a larger solution. But it's definitely something that I can get behind. I do share some of the concerns that some of my colleagues expressed that I think data will help appease. On the back pay point, I did note from watching the South San Francisco meeting that the back pay was related to when they started the conversation. So they were back paying from that starting point. It wasn't an arbitrary sort of back pay. And so I would like us to have something that similarly, you know, makes sense with the process. And I also do share the concerns around the small businesses and the outreach. So hopefully, our our economic development team could could be involved there. Oh, there's the city manager, the city attorney's hand goes up. So that's always exciting. Veronica, did you want to say?
Ms. Ramirez, everyone's waiting.
Thank you, Councilmember Hale. I just wanted to mention that that you're correct that City of South City is the South San Francisco is the only city so far that has done retro. Active application of their ordinance, and that is because they brought an ordinance originally in February on February 10th. So the February 11th date was because they decided to hold off and see how the litigation helped move forward. I will look at that question for us from a factual perspective, but I don't know that this referral will be sufficient. I'll study it for you.
Okay, well, then I would just suggest that perhaps in addition to South San Francisco, our staff look at some of the other cities that passed as well, so that we can have as many as many examples to use to draw from. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. I agree with the comments that have been made. I'm open to considering. I understand the county is not considering because they do not have the numbers of large retailers that individual cities do. That's what I was told. I don't know if they will change their mind, but I am open to considering. But I did want to know the the difference between an urgency ordinance versus just an ordinance going through the normal pattern. Of getting put into action. And I don't mean the definition. I mean, what is the liability of an urgency ordinance? Are we in a good place if we were to do that versus a regular ordinance that would take a bit more time, but would go through a set of hearings and procedures? So I think that would be important for us to know going forward because I understand it's been mentioned in other cities. I wanted to thank Councilmember Espinoza Garnica for the Brookings Institute study. I really appreciate her passing that on to us. It gave a very good explanation about why, like, excuse me. Hospital staff and nursing home, health aides, security guards, employees, why they were not included in this? Because one of my questions was why grocery workers and not. Care facilities that are taking care of people, security guards or health aides working in hospitals. And the answer is in the report in that many of their employers did not benefit from the pandemic. As did some select large retailers across the country. So I was really appreciative of that study because it answered a real important question for me. Also, I understand that the large retailers, some of them have been very good stewards. Some of them are paying minimum wage plus a hero pay, as I'd like to call it, and have been doing that without anyone asking them to do it. So if we were to go forward with something like this, I would want to be assured that we weren't penalizing the good stewards of the employees in Redwood City. I would not say one size fits all. I don't think it usually does. So that would be important. My other consideration is the amount of work that we have on our plates at this time and our staff. I can only think that their plates are overflowing. Who and how are we going to get this work done? So that's a consideration I'd like to. Discuss a little further before we say we're going to move forward with this. Maybe we could ask our Redwood City Improvement Association, our Downtown Business Group or our Chamber to aid us in some of this work. Because I'm afraid if we ask our staff to do it all. It's it's going to take a long time or something else is going to fall by the wayside. Because we can't do this with having a robust outreach, as Councilmember G said. So those are my concerns, and I was wondering if our city manager would like to address that. Before we decide on how to move forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I appreciate the concerns regarding staff workload. As many in the council know, we've only recently filled our economic development manager position. And so Simon Wong has joined us and is here for just about a month. And so we actually have a pretty full plate for him and for the staff working on supporting particularly our small businesses through the pandemic. Council may remember, some members of the council may remember that when we looked at the prospect of a minimum wage, we did a robust outreach process that took a number of months. And so we would need at a staff level to spend some time to think about, you know, what could we do in an effective way? But also a time sensitive way, perhaps in partnership with the Chamber and other business organizations, as you mentioned. But my guess would be, you know, to have some effective outreach would would take some time. And so it would mean a couple of months. But my guess would be, you know, to have some effective outreach would would take some time. And so it would mean a couple of months before we'd be able to come back to you.
Maybe we could ask other cities what kind of outreach they did, how they managed to get the, it seems like some of them got it on there pretty quickly, but I'm not sure they did outreach. And I don't know if that's something that, that's not usually the way we do things here. So that's why I have concerns about it.
Yeah, I would echo Councilmember G's comments. We're not aware of substantial outreach processes in other communities.
So at this point, having heard from everyone, I'd like to know if if anyone would like to, I guess what we're looking for is direction to staff to investigate this further. Maybe investigate urgency ordinance versus regular ordinance. Would someone like to, would the city attorney? Would she like to see a motion on this or just council direction? I don't see anything here about a motion, but it's on the next page.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see it how it was. So I
Here we go.
Okay.
I'm very sorry. It was over here, but thank you. It does look like you are looking for a motion and a second for to take action or not by the city council. So I guess I would be asking our city council if they would like to make a motion. Councilmember Ready.
Thank you, Mayor. My reason for being enthusiastic about this direction to staff was that I can't imagine that there are more than a couple of grocery stores in Redwood City that would meet the 500 plateau. So well, maybe five, maybe there are five now that I think about it. But but I can't imagine it's very many, and I should imagine that that's information we already have. So anyway, I remain, I remain supportive of asking staff to prepare. If if asking for an urgency ordinance is excessive to staff, I want to respect that. But I do want, I do still support asking staff to to provide us an ordinance that would provide employees with the with hazard pay.
And that would be a motion, Councilmember Ready?
That was my awkward attempt at a motion, yes. But but I guess I'm asking staff to help me clarify what is reasonable.
So certainly, the scale is not the same as the minimum wage outreach. So you're right. It's not like that, although that I think was, you know, maybe a six month timeframe that we did community engagement. You'll recall that some of the work that we're doing right now related to pandemic response is related to business engagement. We've recently held some business workshops to get a sense of what assistance is needed from small businesses. We've been taking that in. We've been thinking about how we can respond to that, what programs will relate to that as well as participating in countywide efforts around business support. So I I would just say that fitting outreach in, even though it's to a smaller number of affected businesses, it will be fitting that in to other work. And so that's one of the reasons that I think it's likely more than a month before we could come back to you with information. Additionally, what I heard from several council members was interest in understanding models approached in other communities. And that means for all the different variations that there are, and there's quite a few, looking at at least a handful of those and applying those to Redwood City in order to give you information that's being sought. So reasonably, I think altogether, that's easily a two month process before we can bring you back an ordinance analysis and having done outreach.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Ready?
It does. I was so we're, we're asking these large grocery stores to pay hazard pay for their employees. And and I'm just not sure why we need additional information if we're, if we're willing to maintain a 500 employee plateau.
Yes, from from perspective of staff, it's really up to you as to whether you'd want outreach done. I mean, analysis in terms of at least estimating which businesses would be affected. That's something we could do with fairly limited engagement. But what I heard several council members ask was, could we understand from the employer's side of things, how this would affect them? That that does take conversation and effort.
Okay, let me, let me try this motion and see if I can get support then. The the motion is that that it would be limited to only those grocery stores that that have 500 employees. And and I will ask not for an urgency ordinance, but to give staff the ability to bring back the information we require for for it to go through the normal process. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? I see three hands raised.
Point of information. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, Ready? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Ready, would you mind repeating your motion?
So it is to direct staff to develop an ordinance, not an urgency ordinance, but an ordinance for the city council consideration at a future meeting based on an ordinance adopted by the City of South San Francisco, which is limiting only grocery stores that have 500 or more employees.
Okay. Now I see Councilmember Smith. I should ask, is there a second to the motion?
I am open to seconding, but I have a comment if that's okay before I second. I'm not sure procedurally that makes sense.
No, that's perfect. I have a motion and a second, and now we can open it up to comments. Go ahead, Councilmember Smith.
So my, my, my comment is that, well, number one, I I'm concerned about the 500 number. I think that that is a number that the staff needs to do additional research on. I realize that that is not a part of the proposed recommendation that Councilmember Ready put forward is an ordinance adopted based on South San Francisco. But I think obviously, we're going to rightsize that. So I just want to emphasize that. I don't know that 500 is the right number. I think we need to figure that out. And then secondly, I think that we need to be a little careful here about prioritizing outreach to business owners over outreach to general members of the population, including those essential workers in our community. I am a staunch advocate for small businesses in our community, but I do not think that elevating their voices and concerns over general members of the population is appropriate. And I also think it actually points to issues of equity. So I don't know that this outreach needs to be as robust as other council members have suggested. I do think that there needs to be a pointed analysis and discovery process around size of businesses and so on and so forth. But in terms of outreach, I just, I want us to be thoughtful about that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, again, this might be a point of information again. So Ready's making a motion to make it a not like a regular ordinance and not an urgency ordinance. And if I disagree, can we debate it before we, or do I have to vote and?
You can make a comment to her motion, and then we would vote. If she chooses to change her motion, she can also do that. But the motion is on the floor. And now we're having discussions, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I forget from two weeks takes, you know, I managed to forget. Yeah, so I'd like to push against voting on making this a regular ordinance because this is the middle of a pandemic, and I think what we're dealing with is not just business owners who are doing really well during the pandemic themselves. Like the big corporate businesses that this would target. They have been doing very well since restaurants have been to close, have to mostly stay closed or can't have the same clientele. They definitely are doing well and don't have to be of a big concern. I think the biggest concern is for the livelihood and wellness of our working class. And they are so neglected, even while there are efforts to mitigate the inequities. I'm not sure how the county is really ending up, but we still have in our low income, predominantly black and brown neighborhoods disproportionate rates of COVID in this city. And I have folks in my family, I come from a working class family where it's like we have many exposure risks just by going to work at a grocer's. And and this would be something that we need as soon as possible. It is, it is an urgency because we need urgent care because we're in the midst of a pandemic. We're not starting it. We're in the midst of one. It's been one year. And people are still being are still having to go to work while sale with COVID or else they can't afford rent. It's not there's a far more homelessness during this time. And people still have to pay out of pocket for visits to the doctor if they have any complications. Again, we don't have a single payer healthcare system. So many of the things that people would need to help survive, say if they were elderly or immunocompromised from all this, and to not spread it to people who are vulnerable in their family or in their lives. It could mean many fatal things, and that requires the utmost care. And to the fact that people can be denied this utmost care just for inability to pay is atrocious. So the least that any big business could do is pay $5 hazard fee. And I know that's not the issue here, but the fact is, we're in the midst of a pandemic where people are dying right now. And if you don't pass this urgency notice or ordinance, you're just going to let them squander and just fight for themselves until this passes. You're just going to let it, you're just going to let this ride it out for another month or so. And so we need this money ASAP.
Okay, thank thank you. Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you. I would have to agree with my colleague. I would not be able to support the motion as proposed. You know, if you look through the other cities and what they have proposed, we're talking about there's the city attorney again, but I'm going to finish my comment. We're talking about ordinances at sunset after like 120 days. And I will remind you that the previous council passed an urgency ordinance for floor area ratios as related to health and safety of the community. So I think that we could potentially make the findings for an urgency ordinance. I would suggest we amend the the motion to say that staff will come back with a regular ordinance and an urgency ordinance, and the council can make the decision as to which one to pass. And I don't believe this would take three months. I think it should come back to the next meeting with what we have. And and I would, I would offer myself, if the, if my colleagues need additional research done, I would be happy to go door to door and do that research. I know that that was something previous councils did when they were exploring minimum wage, and I would be, I would be happy to do that.
Ms. Ramirez, I think you wanted to address the question of an ordinance.
Yes, thank you. And actually, Councilmember Hale or Vice Mayor Hale said what I was going to mention to the council, which is that really staff can bring an urgency ordinance and a standard ordinance. In fact, City of South San Francisco and City of San Mateo adopted both the urgency ordinance and a standalone regular as a belt and suspenders. As I think you mentioned, Mayor, adoption of an urgency ordinance does create one more layer of attack for, let's say, the California Grocers Association. And so having the belt and suspenders approach of adopting both, or at least the option for the council to consider when it comes back would be, you know, completely reasonable. And then at that meeting, once the council has more information, whether you can make the findings for an urgency and how you want to proceed, you can make that call.
Thank you. That was very, very helpful. I appreciate that. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, colleagues, for the conversation this evening. As I said earlier, I think, you know, I'm very open to the conversation, but I do am very concerned about unintended consequences. While we can guess how many businesses might be affected, I'd rather have the data. And again, I go back to my earlier comments that I believe most of the conversation has been about publicly traded companies in large format grocers. We haven't talked about independent grocers, and that was even noticed. There was no outreach to them this evening. So when I read this agenda, and when I read the staff report, the first local business that came to mind was Chava's Market. Long history here in Redwood City, the family, the brothers, their markets would be affected at 500. Because I reached out, they reached out to me because I thought of them first. And their smallest store is on Arguello, 3,500 square feet. That doesn't mean all their business, all their stores make money. That doesn't mean all their stores make gross profits. But we have to balance that with data to make sure that if a $5 an hour hazard pay applied retroactively means that that business is not viable. As much as the passion that our, my colleague, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, brought to her argument, having those workers out of a job is worse than creating and doing the homework to check and see. If the council wants to do something like an emergency ordinance, perhaps maybe it's a national publicly traded company with 1,000 employees or more with over 10,000 square feet. But unless we do the homework to find out which businesses are affected, we're going to take a crapshoot and we may lose some local businesses, as Councilmember Smith indicated. The reason that the county stepped back from their ordinance was for one reason. There was only going to be one store that was going to be affected by the county ordinance because of its application to unincorporated San Mateo County. And that was another Chava's Market store. It would not have affected any other store. So I think we need to be careful of how we proceed and make sure we're not guessing at who this ordinance might apply to and not relying on some of these Google alert to tell them that this council is looking at an emergency ordinance. So I think we need to do things in a very diligent, respectful manner in which we can bring the data forward so we can make a good decision and not have unintended consequences. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Ms. Ramirez, I see your hand raised.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I forgot to lower it after last time.
Okay. Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you. I'm not going to add anymore. I agree with my colleagues, and I'd like to take it back to both the urgency and the regular ordinance to cover all of us. I don't want to remove the urgency of it because of all the reasons that were mentioned.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate City Attorney Ramirez's comments and Vice Mayor Hale's suggestion that that the urgency ordinance did not need to be removed. My only reason for offering it in the way I did was because I thought that I had a better chance of getting the votes that I needed in order to get it passed. So so I will amend it as suggested. And I also embrace the suggestion that we use other organizations in the city, including us, if if we want to go and get the data that we need. So if we need to support staff, then I too offer my services and ask if the chamber or other organizations might be available to assist us as well.
Well, I did want to ask, in light of the questions that were brought up by Councilmember G, do we need to provide direction as to a ceiling of number of employees? Or is that something that we don't have to do at this time? I do have a concern that some unintended consequence will happen if we pick a number without really doing the homework on the number. Ms. Diaz?
So I wanted to note that the referral does specify language, and so it does specifically talk And so it does specifically talk about a drugstore grocery store with three hundred employees nationwide. I've also heard several council members ask for looking at examples beyond South San Francisco. So we do need direction. It would, it would be very helpful to have clarity on, are you asking us to look at multiple models? You know, perhaps just in the Bay Area, not statewide. But would you like us to look at multiple models? Um, or would you like to specify a threshold that's either as noted in the referral or a different threshold?
My motion was for five hundred employees, not three hundred. And um, and the direction um was not to include the um, my dir- my motion was not to include um going outside San Mateo County. In terms of looking at other, what what other um cities are doing.
So to clarify, Councilmember Ready, you were looking to ask staff to develop an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance to be brought back to the council. And the ceiling, the the number you suggested was uh five hundred?
Five hundred, not three. And I can imagine that the the um, the recommendation that would be coming to us would have different alternatives. If it were uh five hundred, then it would, it would include these, these stores. If it were a thousand, it would include these stores. So um I can imagine that that if we were to get the support we needed of all council members, it would have some of those um, and some of that information that other council members might need in order to support it.
And I understand that there may be city, other cities were talking about exemptions. But I don't know if anyone did an exemption for certain businesses uh, based on number of employees they had at the particular site. So I I just don't know. So the motion, right now, the motion stands that uh, that was made by Councilmember Ready. Councilmember Smith, uh, are you still wishing to second that motion?
Um, I'm, I would like to see the motion made without any reference to a floor number. So I don't think we need to reference five hundred in the motion. We sh- I think that we should um direct staff to come back with options um that have been vetted through whatever analytical process they deemed appropriate. I do, I I don't think that's identifying five hundred based on no data or analysis is a reasonable um way to move forward. I think we should just remove that number from the motion.
Okay, I can accept that.
Okay, then I second.
And Councilmember Smith, I I really ta- I took your comments into consideration that uh this is something that in the interest of the urgency or the time, maybe we're not talking about, as you said, robust outreach. This is something that uh we may follow the lead of other cities and and not do that. But I I would be interested in just researching this further. So let's start with asking our staff to bring back the two ordinances. And then we have further discussion uh go from there. And if that's how I'm understanding the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, either Councilmember Ready or Councilmember Smith. Hearing no objections, I see a hand up with Councilmember Aguirre. Is there discussion? Councilmember Aguirre?
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower it from earlier. I I think we have a motion second and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to waste anyone's time. I just wanted to clarify. Um, so Ready, you want to make a motion that's an urgency ordinance? And then also a separate ordinance? Um, can you explain basically again um what that, what you, what your motion is and and why you're doing it? I'm sorry if I missed.
The motion is based on the recommendation of our city attorney. And I initially was recommending without the urgency ordinance because I was trying to support staff and was trying to get the votes that we needed in order to get the um, the motion passed. So on advice of city attorney, we can offer um a motion that includes both the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance.
So how does that play into effect um the regular ordinance? Like, we have an urgency ordinance that does th- this job. And then what does the other ordinance do?
Well, actually, I'm going to ask our city attorney. I, there's a reason why she suggested that. So can I ask the city attorney to please clarify? Because I I really think that we're there. We're almost there.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm happy to um, you know, elaborate and and bring more discussion when this comes back, since this is simply a referral item. But uh, really, I would recommend for something like this, I would recommend um that if you're looking for an urgency action, that we do both the urgency ordinance as well as a standard adopted ordinance. Um, because as I mentioned, um, an urgency ordinance gives one more basis for challenging the city's action. And we do know that we do have active challengers to these hazard pay ordinances. Um, by doing an urgency ordinance and then following that with the regular adoption, you adopt the urgency ordinance, it becomes effective immediately. You do the first reading of the regular ordinance, which has the exact same regulatory provisions in it. Um, come back at the next meeting, usually two weeks later for a second reading, and then wait out a thirty day effectiveness period. Then that one goes into effect. It means you really only have a forty-five day window in which the urgency ordinance itself can be attacked. Um, and so that's why I'm recommending to the extent, I mean, the reality is by the council asking us to come back, study something and bring these two ordinances to you, you're not acting. You'll have an opportunity at the next meeting to really consider whether you have the findings to make the urgency and decide whether to adopt the urgency and the regular or just your standard adoption process. An urgency ordinance, as you know, requires a five-sevenths vote of the council. A standard ordinance only requires a simple majority.
Thank you for explaining all of that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'd now like to ask our city clerk if she can call the roll on this motion.
Mayor Howard, may I just clarify one point, please?
Yes, certainly.
So based on comments from Councilmembers Ready, Smith, and yourself, Mayor, I believe I understand you are not anticipating significant outreach as part of this. That instead it is to be looking at models based in San Mateo County, bring back both urgency and regular ordinances, provide data, but not necessarily do outreach to employers. Do I understand that correctly?
That's what I I said. I didn't see anyone disagreeing with me. Speak now or forever hold your peace, but I don't see any hands raised on that. So I I just think because of the situation at hand, I I think we need to make this decision as quickly as possible if we're going to do it at all.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure I understood the direction, um, should the motion succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for asking. Uh, our city clerk will call the roll now.
Thank you. Councilmember G.
Mayor Howard, before I vote, can I ask Ms. Stevenson for clarification of that last point? Was that no outreach that you said?
It did not say no outreach, but I did not hear a request for significant outreach. Um, we're going to have to assess, you know, I heard several council members, including you, ask for, for example, a list of employers that are affected. So that's, you know, data that we'll need to pull together. We haven't done yet. I don't know how many that is. Um, so it could be, you know, for example, you know, an email to them versus following up with comb phone calls and in-person events, you know, I mean, I I I am hearing a distinction between what you had proposed as significant outreach and what I believe the motion to be. And that's what I'm, I'm trying to make sure we understand so we don't disappoint you.
As long as there's outreach to these employers, I'm willing to say yes. But if there's no outreach, I will oppose it. So that, that's why I want that clarification. So to my colleagues who made the motion, are you, are you suggesting that be no outreach to employers?
I was not, so I was, uh, we have extensive information about our employers already. The number of employees and that kind of thing. We don't, so um, there was a suggestion that we would knock on doors. I don't think that staff needs to be knocking on doors. And if doors need to be knocked on, we can ask, um, we can, I can do that. I mean, other people can do that. We don't need staff to do that. So this is direction to staff. If staff needs help to do something, then we can help with that.
I agree with that. This is a Michael. Um, my caveat, I will emphasize the point that um I made you know, a few minutes ago. I think that elevating the voices of certain community members, specifically um, you know, business owners uh who employ essential workers would uh, in a substantial way would be the wrong direction to move in. That's not saying there should be no outreach, but I do think that we need to keep that into, uh, take that into consideration.
Ms. Diaz, is that enough clarity?
I believe so. Um, I think when we run the numbers, I I'm actually not confident we know of the number of employees. For example, I I suspect we'll have some of that through our business license information, for example. However, um, I think a lot of cities are looking at this by national or chain number of membership. So our employee levels, and I don't think we necessarily have that. So I think there's gonna be a threshold of analysis we'll need to do. And until we don't do that, I really won't have a sense of the universe of how difficult the outreach will be. But I think what I hear um council members saying is you'd like there to be at least some level of outreach. And I hear council members a expressing willingness to help with that. So we will take you up on that.
I'm willing to help also with that outreach.
Thank you.
As am I. Thank you.
City Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the discussion. Okay, we're moving on to item eight B, City Council Member Report of Conferences Attended. Does anyone have a report out? I don't believe I saw any. We can move on to city, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I'll just keep it brief. Um, I had the opportunity to attend uh the virtual conference uh from the Thrive Alliance on redistricting and got some really interesting feedback that I'd love to share with you. Uh, so again, the conference was uh scheduled and put on, uh, put forward by Thrive Alliance. Uh, Julie Marks from the Asian Americans Advancing Justice Center gave um comments about the process of redistricting. And I would say that the main takeaway um, from that particular conference was really about keeping the outreach process as robust um and engaged as possible. And the way that they particularly um you know, mentioned how to move forward with that engagement process is developing uh ad hoc committee. I I believe that is part of the plan up from Redwood City already. But um allowing that ad hoc committee to have leverage and uh space and flexibility to be able to uh create a work plan that they deem reasonable um in collaboration with the demographics uh firm that is hired. Um, and this is again, just to keep the process as fair, as transparent, and as equitable as possible. Well, I just wanted to share that with uh the rest of my colleagues and hopefully that will be uh input uh as we move forward with the redistricting process. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Uh, it reminded me, I went to the California Cities, Cal Cities meeting uh the last Fri- Friday of February. And at that, we appointed Mark, we voted on Mark Nagales from South San Francisco to be the new member of the Transportation Authority. And he will represent the northern end of San Mateo County. And also, it was hosted by San Carlos and they gave a very excellent presentation on their general plan update plans. And it was just really very thorough and very interesting. And I have asked for a copy of that presentation that I will share with you because I think you might be interested in what's going on with our neighbor next door. They have a lot going on that I wasn't aware of. So I'll be happy to share that. Uh, item eight C, our City Council Committee Reports. We'll start with the Governance Subcommittee. Vice Mayor Hale will give the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the committee received a presentation from Dane Hutchings. He is our city's legislative consultant regarding a proposed Senate bill, which is SB nine, uh, a piece of state legislation. It would require a local government to ministerially approve a housing development containing two residential units in single-family residential zones. Um, this measure would require local governments to ministerially approve urban lot splits as well. A majority of the committee directed city staff to draft an opposed letter, uh, and I'm sorry, it's an opposed unless amended letter. And the Governments Committee will review the draft letter at our upcoming March sixteenth meeting. City staff is tailoring the opposition letter to include Redwood City's specific concerns and uh has restated its openness to missing middle housing uh through a local community engagement process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Um, I'll report out on the Harborview Ad hoc Committee. Vice Mayor Hale, Councilmember Smith, and I met with city staff on March first for the first ad hoc committee meeting to review the proposed Harborview Development Project. The Harborview Project is located at three twenty to three fifty Bloomquist Street and is proposing three office buildings totaling seven hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot, a thirty-five thousand square foot employee amenities building, and an onsite parking structure, public and private open space, as well as a proposed community facility. The project will require a general plan amendment and rezoning. Staff updated the committee on the most recent development proposal as well as additional community benefits proposed by the developer, J. Paul Company, as part of the potential development agreement between the city and the applicant. Staff also reviewed the project history with the committee and answered questions related to the city review process. The next committee date is a date to be determined. Next, we have the two by two by two Belmont, Redwood City, the Belmont Redwood Shore School District Meeting. Councilmember G will give an update.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Um, as you indicated, uh, Mayor, City Manager Diaz and I met with the Belmont River Shore School District and the city of Belmont in our two by two by two on March second. Uh, the school district provided an update on their plans to reopen schools, their hybrid learning modules, and they hope to begin very quickly as the county moves closer and closer to the orange tier as well as there'd be pursuing in-person teaching and learning for the next school year uh as as safety orders in the state situation and the county health situation allows. The playgrounds are open, um Belmont Recreation is is allowing youth sports to occur on the playfields. And and as the president of the B R S S D uh district talked about, it's been almost a year, it's getting really close to a year that we've been in sort of sheltering in place and distance learning. And as schools, whether it be Belmont River Shores or Redwood City or Secundarian High School District opens back up, particularly in a hybrid model, we all need to be thoughtful and and more observant when we're driving because our youth will be more out on the streets than ever before, at least for the last year. And so message boards and reminders will be up around the community to remind everybody that our young people are gonna be out and about that we haven't seen for over a year. The other conversation is that the district is looking, beginning to look at extending their parcel taxes, the beginning to take a look at what they may need to do. They've gone through the yo-yo process of being um a local funded school district versus a state-supported school district. And so they're trying to plan now for what may happen in two years from now. And um, given all that's going on, while we typically meet twice a year, the group decided to meet in May to learn more about how things progress between now and May and to talk about, more about what's gonna happen in the fall with the new academic school year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, Councilmember Ready will give us an update on the city-owned property ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. The city-owned property ad hoc committee met on Thursday, March fourth, to discuss a potential city-county property exchange in the inner harbor area. The committee received an update regarding due diligence being conducted on the three parcels in the area, the county's parcel at fifteen eighty Maple, and the city's parcels at fourteen oh two and fourteen fifty Maple. The committee and the city staff discussed the development of a proposal for county consideration. The committee will meet again later this month to discuss a draft proposal before meeting with county representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. And in addition, I, this was brought to my attention by Sandy Wong at CCAG and Councilmember Aguirre, who serves on CCAG for the city of Redwood City, that there is an opening they would love to see filled by a member of the City Council of Redwood City on the Airport Land Use Committee. It meets monthly. There are no meetings in November or December. They are on the last Thursday of the month at four PM. Typically, they are held at Burlingame City Council Chambers, but during COVID, they've been meeting remotely and probably will for several months now. And the meetings last about an hour. So I'm not asking at this moment, but if anyone is interested in serving on the Airport Land Use Committee, could you please contact me this week so that I could inform Sandy Wong of CCAG and Councilmember Aguirre that we have recommended someone to sit in that seat? If you want additional information, just give me a ring. Thank you so much. And now we have our city manager update.
Thank you. So two updates this evening. First, as was noted at the beginning of the meeting, earlier today, we announced that there will be a community meeting on April twenty-second from five to nine PM. Mayor Howard and Vice Mayor Hale will be hosting this meeting on Zoom, and it will be an opportunity for us to share information about our fire and police department's programs, service calls, budget and staffing history, and anticipated goals for the next fiscal year. As well, staff will briefly provide information about the process we expect to undertake in more detail next year around reimagining services and community engagement that will take place during the course of the next fiscal year. Public input from that meeting will be considered as part of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget development process. And community members are also welcome to provide input at the June fourteenth study session on the budget and by contacting the city at the email address budget2021@redwoodcity.org. And then, secondly, also on financial news, as many likely heard over the weekend, the Senate passed a COVID relief bill, which will now return to the House of Representatives for consideration. And if it passes there, we would expect that it will be signed into law. There were many provisions in the federal bill that would support our community members with direct payments through support for small businesses, emergency rental assistance, healthcare assistance, and more. Additionally, currently, the bill includes support to states and cities. And while the details are still being developed and we don't yet have final information, it does appear that we could receive between eight and nine million dollars this year and next year. The Senate version of the bill allows cities to use these funds to offset revenue losses and for necessary infrastructure improvements, including water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. We're keeping our fingers crossed for a final relief bill, and we'll certainly provide an update on funding to the city as soon as we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. We'll keep our fingers crossed on that one. Moving on now to item number nine, a public hearing. Nine A, zoning ordinance amendments related to accessory dwelling units known as ADUs. Community Development and Transportation Department Director Mark Munzer will introduce the item, and Senior Planner Apollo Rojas will give the presentation. Mr. Munzer?
Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of City Council. If we could go to the next slide, please. For tonight's presentation, I will provide an overview of the recent public hearings the city has held to review our ADU ordinance. And then, as you noted, I will hand it over to Senior Planner Apollo Rojas to provide further background on our ADU review process, to summarize the number of ADU applications that we've received over the last three years, and then followed by recommendations for this evening. Apollo will also review the questions that we are asking of City Council this evening and be available following our presentation. I'd like to thank Apollo for his many months of hard work on this ordinance. The ADU ordinance was previously reviewed by the City Council on July thirteenth, initially July thirteenth, 2020. At that hearing, the council voted in the majority of adopting an urgency ordinance that included a sixteen-foot height limit for detached ADUs, applied lot coverage and FAR or floor area ratio standards for ADUs, and also permitted the short-term rental of ADUs that were built prior to January first, 2020. However, the motion did not pass, as the council needed six of seven affirmative votes required in order to pass an urgency ordinance. At council's directions, staff then returned with the standard ordinance adoption process, first presenting the ordinance to the Planning Commission. And on August eighteenth, 2020, the Planning Commission voted to approve a resolution or to adopt a resolution recommending approval of the ADU ordinance. On October twelfth, 2020, the council was scheduled to review the first reading of the ADU ordinance. However, due to time constraints that evening, the agenda item was continued to a later date. On November twenty-third, 2020, City Council introduced the ADU ordinance amendments to apply both FAR and lot coverage standards, limit short-term rentals to those units in place prior to January first, 2020, and to have a sixteen-foot maximum for detached ADUs. On December twenty-first, 2020, the second reading of that ADU ordinance was pulled from the council's consent agenda for further discussion. Some council members expressed concern over establishing a height maximum of sixteen feet for detached ADUs, which was more restrictive in some surrounding communities. The council declined to adopt the ADU amendments and asked staff to return the ordinance for further discussion of the ADU height standards. Tonight's presentation focuses on the various height options for ADUs, including alternative ADU building heights. While the staff and the Planning Commission recommend a sixteen-foot ADU height, staff would again note that an eighteen-foot ADU height would allow for additional second-story livable space while increasing the building height by two feet. Another alternative that Apollo will review would be to adopt a sixteen-foot height maximum and return at a future date and have staff research potential objective design standards to allow for taller ADUs in the future. Staff will review those different height options later in the presentation, and there are also diagrams available in both staff report and in an attachment. Next slide, please. This slide displays a summary of many public outreach events and meetings that have occurred since 2019 in order to promote ADU construction in Redwood City. There have been nearly two hundred ADU units either applied for or built in the last three years as a result of the outreach by the city and our partner organizations. I do want to note that city staff is in the process of finalizing the Heart of San Mateo County ADU one-stop construction review. That includes four template pre-approved ADU designs, and we should launch that program in the near future to further encourage ADU construction. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rojas.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Apollo Rojas, and I'm a senior planner with the city. And I'll start off with city council questions. So these are questions related to the recommendations in the staff report. These are for council's consideration during the presentation. So first, does the council support a sixteen-foot height limit for detached ADUs and attached ADUs encroaching into the rear setback area? Staff has provided alternatives to the recommendations. First, an alternative that would allow for the sixteen-foot height maximum for detached ADUs, but to return to the city council to reassess, to explore objective standards for taller ADUs at a later date. Also, another alternative to allow a maximum height for detached ADUs of up to twenty-two feet in height, that's what allow for two-story ADUs. And lastly, an alternative to allow a maximum height for detached ADUs of either eighteen or twenty feet. And then the next question, does the council support the recommendations for floor area lot coverage and short-term rentals? These also come with an alternative for the council to make modifications related to floor area lot coverage, short-term rentals, or other portions of the ordinance, as long as those other portions being amended would comply with state law. Next slide, please. So this is a heat map of total ADU applications received between the years of 2019, 2020, and 21. So, so far through that time period, a total of one hundred and eighty-six ADU applications have been submitted. The heat map shows a visual representation of the variety of locations across the city. So the areas in red in the map have a higher concentration of ADUs, where the cooler blue areas of the heat map have a smaller concentration of ADUs. And during the same time, the city has issued one hundred and twenty-three permits. So when a permit is issued, it's when the city has reviewed the building permit plans and has approved them, and the contractor has picked them up and to begin construction. We've also received, or we also have had, seventy-four final permits. These final permits are jobs that have been completed, inspected, and signed off by the city and are now ready to be occupied. So these are jobs that are finished, finalled. Next slide, please. And this next heat map shows during that same period, the detached ADUs above sixteen feet. So in that time, we've had twenty-six, or rather thirteen percent of that total number that were for detached ADUs above sixteen feet in height, and that includes both ADUs above detached garages, as well as standalone detached two-story ADUs. So there are twenty-six ADUs located across multiple neighborhoods across the city. And the median height in that time, specifically for ADUs above sixteen feet that are detached, has been twenty-two point four feet. Next slide, please. So on to the first recommendation regarding height. So state law requires that cities establish a height maximum of at least sixteen feet in height. Staff supports the Planning Commission recommendation of a higher, of a height limit of detached ADUs of sixteen feet in order to comply with state law. The commission also recommended to limit the height of attached ADUs to sixteen feet in height when located within the rear setback area. So currently, attached ADUs share the same height limit as the main home. So in most zoning districts, attached ADUs would be allowed to be constructed up to a maximum of twenty-eight feet tall. However, with the commission's amendment, when an ADU is encroaching into this rear setback area, where, you know, typically attached structures to the main home are currently not allowed, it would then be required to step down to sixteen feet. So the rear setback area, this is the distance between the rear of the main home and the rear property line. And generally, in our zoning districts, that's twenty feet. And one of the stated intents of the commission for this amendment was to prohibit attached full twenty-eight-foot-tall second-story ADUs from being located four feet from the side and rear property line. So it's important to consider for ADUs, they're required to be reviewed ministerially. So typically, a second-story addition would require an architectural permit and a discretionary review process with the zoning administrator. An ADU, however, would just need a building permit reviewed at the staff level through objective design standards. So when we're reviewing these ADUs, they have to have objective standards associated with them. Next slide, please. And speaking earlier about the alternative to the recommendations in the staff report, this shows the detached ADU potential heights of sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two feet that we'll be discussing right now. So an eighteen-foot-tall structure would allow a single-story with a loft above for living space, or a two-story structure with very short ceiling heights and a flat roof, but code compliant. A twenty-foot-tall structure would allow for a partial two-story with a low pitch roof. It could also allow for a second story above a garage. And finally, a twenty-two-foot-tall structure would allow for a full two-story, as pictured on this slide, showing each story having a foot standard plate heights, as well as a standard four and twelve pitched roof. So ADU, something to consider is that ADUs with lower heights could cause some architectural constraints to roof slopes that might not allow for an ADU to match the architectural style of the main home, or just have a flexibility in different types of architectural styles. Next slide, please. And then a quick summary of the variety of regulations in our neighboring cities. We've had questions in the past about what our neighbors are doing in the peninsula, and there are a variety of approaches across cities shown on this table. Most cities allow attached ADUs to be the same height as the primary dwelling or main home, and that height varies from city to city. But in Redwood City, that would be twenty-eight feet. Some cities allow detached ADUs above sixteen feet, including allowing a twenty-foot-tall ADU above detached garage, or twenty feet total in height, I should say. And when allowing an ADU above a garage, these regulations are usually paired with additional requirements for garages to be existing or to be limited in their expansion of their footprint of the garage. And still, other cities choose to limit ADUs to sixteen feet in height for both the attached ADU and the detached ADU. So as you can see, there's a variety of approaches from our neighboring cities. Next slide, please. And so here again, we have the city council questions, including height and the alternatives, and also the second question regarding the recommendations for floor area lot coverage and short-term rentals, as well as that alternative. So we will leave these slides up for the council to review. That's it for my presentation. Thank you very much. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Munzer, and thank you, Mr. Rojas. I really appreciate your very thorough presentation. Really appreciate it. And the attachments that we received, very helpful. Thank you. So now, if I'd like to ask, it seems like there is one council member for clarifying question. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you so much for that presentation and for the, for the report that was in our agenda packet. I really, that was very helpful. The question I have is about the floor area ratio, and I wondered if you could explain to me the rationale between the Planning Commission's position on FAR and how they differ with staffs, and the rationale between those two points of view?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Ready. So, you know, the issue, I think, is that floor area and living area, a lot of times, they're sort of interchangeable. The issue with Redwood City is that we have a soft cap threshold. We, we don't have a hard cap FAR that would prohibit additional floor area from being added on. We just have a additional review threshold that would kick a project from, say, a staff-level review to a zoning administrator hearing, or perhaps to a planning commission hearing. So since ADUs are required to be reviewed ministerially and can't be reviewed through discretionary review, either CA or the Planning Commission, it was staff's interpretation that applying floor area as long, as well as the floor area of the main home, would then, you know, put us in a position where, that we can't do by state law. We can't review these through discretionary review. So we're allowed to have certain square footage limitations, but not necessarily apply floor area.
Because, because they can't, the floor area ratio can be considered with the main home, and you're saying not with ADUs because of the ministerial?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak to please raise your hand now. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak to please raise your hand now. While we're waiting for people to raise their hands, I wanted to say that we've received during this past week, we have received multiple emails and two petitions that I'm aware of. There may be, I think there were two. But I just wanted to assure everyone that we did receive them, the council received them, as well as staff, and it was entered into the public record. And those of you who sent any emails late last night or this morning, I have not had a chance to reply to you, but I did read them all. But the next day or two, I will send you a note thanking you for your input. I just wanted to reassure you that your information was received and shared with the council and the staff. And thank you for your input. Right now, we have nine hands raised. I want to give it another minute or so, because when I call the last speaker, there will be no other speakers after that time that I call the last speaker. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item, accessory dwelling units? We have 12 speakers now. I think that is it. So at this time, we have 12 speakers, and the last speaker is Isabella Chu. And after Isabella Chu, there'll be no more public comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last speaker, they'll be asked to send their public comment to the council at council@redwoodcity.org. And at this time, since we do have 12 speakers, I do ask that you limit your comments to two minutes, so that we do allow enough time for the council to have a discussion. So I'll call two at a time. And you'll be given two minutes to speak. The clock will start as you as you speak. My first speaker is Nico Posner, and my second is Katie Hagman.
Maybe a technical glitch, but you unmuted me instead of one of them.
No, I I didn't touch anything. I don't, I'm sorry, may I have your name?
Colin Park, sorry.
Okay, I'm afraid, oh, I'm sorry. Here it is. It just popped up. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Colin Park. You are the first speaker, and then Mr. Nico Posner.
Okay, thanks. Just very briefly, I'm hoping to construct an ADU. Well, I mean, eventually I'll get my money back from constructing. This is not going to be a big money-making thing for me. But a 16-foot height limit would not make, would make it impractical for me to construct an ADU, much as I would like to add to the housing supply in in our area. The reason it it wouldn't work is is that we don't have, where we would want to put it would be over a garage which we which we will be rebuilding with a higher higher ceiling in order to accommodate a slightly larger vehicle. But I just wanted to say that, and I'll yield the rest of my time in the interest of time.
Thank you, Mr. Park. My next speaker is Nico Posner, and then Katie Hagman.
Hello, city council. Hello, Mayor Card. Thank you for allowing me to speak again on this topic. We've spoken a number of times before. I wanted to, again, request that you adopt the ordinance, including grandfathering and short-term rentals of existing ADU units that have been registered prior to January 1, 2020. I and those others in this category have, did not have regulations in place when those were created. And I, among the others, depend on that income to make my ends meet, as I wrote in my email earlier this week. So just want to voice again my request to please include that in. And I hope regarding the other regulations around height ordinance, that you will adopt something. I know that there there's a lot of discussion around it, and it's a difficult topic. So you know, progress forward, and then it can be amended in the future as needed. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Katie Hagman, and then Jason Turner.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to comment. I live at 241 Hudson Street in Mount Carmel. And we actually had our neighbor build an ADU, and at first it was going to be a second story in it. I'm going to be honest, it caused a lot of stress for us, because we felt like we were going to kind of lose our privacy, especially if you think about if, you know, all three of your adjoining neighbors built really tall ADUs. We were really lucky. She built a one-story ADU. It's probably about like 14 or 16 feet. She rents it for like $3,000 a month. It's a one-bedroom. And so I think it, you know, generates a decent amount of income for her, but it's been very doable for us from a privacy perspective. But I think if it was a 22-foot ADU, especially if you had it, you know, from three neighbors, it just would have really been stressful and really affected our quality of life. So I think there is a balance that you can find by having, you know, a 16-foot, but also having sustainable enough income. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, and then Misha Sellen.
Hi, Mayor. This is Jason Turner. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I'm a California native, and I live in Redwood City. I'm a citizen of Redwood City. And with the extreme shortage in housing that we have, I would just urge the the council to oppose lowering the maximum roof height to 16 feet. I agree with the gentleman who spoke a few before me, that it does drastically limit some people's opportunities on their properties to build ADUs that would fit within their 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 boundaries and be appropriate for the neighborhoods and the look. I I myself am in the process of of trying to put together an ADU in my yard, and would love to have a little bit of extra room to have a loft. And if you were to make such amendments that would change these things, please take into consideration and providing, you know, adequate notification period. So folks like myself who are in process of submitting their permits, we could get these things, you know, put in in time without without, you know, being impacted by the changes. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. My next speaker is Misha Sellen, and then Queller.
Yes, good evening, city council. This is Misha Sellen. I live in Edgewood Park in Redwood City. Been here for about four years. I wanted to speak in support of, you know, encouraging building new housing. I really like ADUs when I walk around my neighborhood and the ones nearby. For example, the houses near Sequoia High School, I see a lot of variety of housing, duplexes, triplexes, houses with ADUs in the back, one-story, two-story. I really like that variety. I think it looks great. For me, as someone that's going to be looking to buy my first home in the area this year, I want to have my parents potentially live on the property, because I have two young kids, and they can't, you know, afford to buy their own place around here. Having an ADU would be very valuable for me to be able to have my family around. And having, you know, limitations like other speakers are speaking about, for example, not being able to put one over a detached garage that's on the property, which a lot of homes here do, especially homes with smaller lots, that would be unfortunate. So I'm speaking to encourage building, you know, encourage allowing more types of housing to be built, especially ones that support families that can help homeowners and landowners, you know, economically benefit from their property as they see fit. And so I urge council to avoid any burdens and restrictions on ADUs in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Queller, and then Rachel Holt.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. So recently around the bay, I know ADUs have gotten much more attention as being like a way to increase our much-needed home supply in less drastic ways. But this limit, I think, is far too low, and it'll seriously restrict second-story ADUs. If we look at light-density cities like Berkeley that have like moderate-sized developments, it doesn't create any more of an imposing structure to their neighborhoods. So the current standard of housing of California is largely like overcrowded housing, families and multiple families being stuffed into single units. So I don't see a reason why we should put this unnecessary and strict restriction on giving these people more spaces for their area in a way that's not really going to cause any effects on the neighborhoods. That's all my comment.
Thank you. My next speaker is Rachel Holt, and then Chris Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Howard, and council members. Thank you for considering the comments that I already submitted via email. Honestly, I don't have any illusion about what the outcome of tonight's vote will be. I'd like to think that you will take into consideration the countless hours of work by our city staff, the planning commission, the previous city council, and members of the public that resulted in the staff's recommendation. The very same as the ordinance that was unceremoniously pulled from consent calendar on December 21, 2020. I'd like to think that since your goal is to promote the creation of additional affordable housing units, you did some of your own research and actually looked into the building of two-story-tall detached ADUs that disproportionately negatively and permanently impact two neighborhoods in particular over all others in Redwood City, as detailed by one of the heat maps attached to the staff report. And that through your research, you discovered anecdotally that almost all of the two-story-tall ADUs in my neighborhood are actually being used as additional square footage for the existing family and not being rented to teachers or first responders, housing boomerang, adult children, or aging parents. I'd like to think that you would have listened to the community members who reached out to you, maybe gone and stood in one of their backyards to see what the impact was actually like. I'd like to think. I'm here tonight to ask you yet again that you adopt staff's recommendation, a recommendation which provides for every possible streamline for the creation of ADUs and limits the height to 16 feet. This recommendation would impact all of the neighborhoods equally and promote the types of ADUs that are the most economical to build, and therefore the most affordable to rent. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Chris Johnson, and then Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, city council. Nearly four years ago, our city council adopted a misguided ordinance, because they were led to believe they had no choice in accepting 28-foot-tall detached ADUs just four feet from the fence line. We now know that isn't true. Our planning commission has subsequently corrected that wrong, as well as the council prior. I'm hard-pressed to think of an issue that has been more divisive to our neighborhoods and has unnecessarily chewed up more staff time and community engagement than this issue. You had an opportunity to right the wrong last December, and you chose not to do so. As a city and as elected officials, you are committed to have zoning ordinances that do no harm, and you passed on that opportunity. This entire process has been rife with problems, and is it any wonder that residents feel burned? This should never have come to you as a cursory consent items after two years of work on this issue by staff, prior council, and the community. It could have easily been avoided. Regarding ADUs, one-story ADUs are easier to build, less expensive, and subsequently less expensive to rent out. Isn't that our goal, affordable housing? The majority of second-story ADUs have been constructed to provide additional living space, because it's cheaper to do that than add a second story onto a home. That smacks against the attempt for loosening regulations. And while the homeowner gets the additional square footage, it's at the expense of the surrounding neighbors. You've seen the pictures. You have an opportunity to reduce neighborhood strife and do no harm. Please adopt the staff and the planning commission recommendation to limit ADUs to one story when it's in the rear setback. I also believe we should consider two stories, only if there is an existing detached garage, and there should not be able to increase the footprint of the existing garage, as mentioned by Apollo Rojas earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Jordan Grimes, and then Brandon Enriquez. Mr. Grimes, could you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. It didn't, the unmute didn't appear. Good evening, council, honorable mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm here speaking both as an individual and in my capacity as political director of Peninsula Young Democrats in order to reiterate our strong opposition to the 16-foot height limit on above-garage ADUs, which, as has been noted, is essentially a de facto ban on those homes. During the midst of a global pandemic, when so many have lost their jobs, livelihoods, and homes, as well as a worsening statewide housing crisis, the idea that the city would consider a ban on any type of housing is deeply unfortunate and irresponsible. But moreover, ADUs in Redwood City in fact offer some of the most naturally affordable housing in the area. The rents on nearly every ADU on Craigslist in Redwood City right now correspond with the low and very low AMI ban levels for San Mateo County. This is deeply important now more than ever. On a final note, it's my understanding that there will be a cleanup bill for unintended issues stemming from the 2019 legislative ADU package. As the state has made a concerted effort to make it easier, not harder to build an ADU, it's highly unlikely that allowing cities to ban above-garage ADUs was an intentional part of that legislation. Indeed, the 16 feet presented in the legislation is not a maximum, but a minimum. And it would be sensible for cities to either move forward with the 22-foot limit or wait to see how the cleanup effort moves forward in the legislature, lest they have to use valuable staff time to modify this ordinance again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Brandon Enriquez, and then call-in user one.
Hello, city council. Thanks for your time. Hi again. I'm a Redwood City resident in District Four. I mean, as a non-homeowner and with family like that that are homeowners, like I personally don't see how this like topic is so controversial. I mean, basically, like, we're in a housing crisis, and like, while ADUs aren't like the only solution to our housing crisis, like, it definitely helps. And I don't see why there should be like pushback against it. If it like, it doesn't really hurt anybody. From what I've heard, there's like a concern about like privacy. I mean, like, it's a second-story building. Like, I have houses in my neighborhood that are like two stories. So like, my question would be like, what's the difference between having like a two-story ADU and having like a single-family like two-story house? That's my question for like, I guess, people who are concerned about so-called privacy. I don't, I don't see that that argument with like any merit at all. And I also would like to encourage the council to approve loosening restrictions, and you know, like, so it's like, no, the 18th feet to 20 feet from like previous comments, you know, are, there's residents who want to house their family members and elderly people who are, you know, like, give us the space to live. And while like, you know, some would say, well, it's not like technically affordable if some do decide. Well, I mean, like, it doesn't hurt anybody. Like, there's no develop, there's no developers. Like, in this conversation, like, it's literally like hurting nobody. And like, for so-called privacy, like, what about two stories? Like, it could make sense.
Thank you. My next speaker is call-in user one, and then my last speaker is Isabella Chu.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcelina Luna. I'm a resident of Redwood City. And I am in support of the higher ADUs of 22 feet. To the previous speaker's point that having two-story houses, how does that impact the privacy of that? Everyone's concern that opposes this measure for higher ADUs. I have been in my house for almost 30 years, and I do want to build a second unit so that my children can actually afford to live here. So for those residents calling opposing, and that impacts one or two districts in our city, yes, it does impact probably Districts One and Seven, which have different zoning laws that are racist versus the overcrowding in our other districts. So it's time to end those racist zoning laws that we've had in the past and implement larger ADUs with higher height capacities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And my last speaker is Isabella Chu.
Good evening, council. So the city of Redwood City's stated priorities are housing. Good evening, Council. Um, so, uh, the city of Redwood City's stated priorities are housing, transportation, children and youth. And the proposed ban on second-story ADUs is in direct conflict with every single one of these priorities. And it is particularly in conflict with the fifth pillar equity. The proposed ban on second-story ADUs over detached garages originally came as an emergency ordinance. The implication being that blocking a view or being subject to renters nearby or the housing of others was a threat to public health and safety. Being unable to afford a two-million-dollar house does not make someone a threat to public safety. Blocking a view is not a threat to public safety. What is a threat to public housing, uh, to public health is the housing shortage, the poverty that comes as a result of it, the displacement, the long commutes and the, the, um, the, uh, high burden of housing costs in this area. And second-story ADUs, while not a panacea, provide a real solution for many families. Over the last few years from the dais, I've heard at various times discuss whether or not renters really need to stand in their homes or whether and they need windows. No such issues have ever been discussed regarding homeowners. So as an equity issue, I think we really need to weigh the housing of the fifty percent of the Redwood City residents who rent as equally important as the views of the half of the Redwood City residents who already own their homes. Second stories are the smallest imaginable incremental change. We can either meet the challenges of the twenty-first century and address housing shortages and climate change or we can keep zoning from the fifties. We cannot do both. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your comments. The public comment section is now closed. If you would like to, um, add your comment to the discussion, please send us your email to council@redwoodcity.org and it will be entered into the record. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to council discussion. Uh, I see that Mr. Munzer has his hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I appreciate it. Um, Apollo and I, uh, again are here to answer the council questions and to give clarifications. Apollo is our expert, so if I direct them to him initially and I will weigh in as needed. I did want to offer up because I do think it may be a question that the city is working with the county twenty-one elements group to, uh, conduct a rent survey, a snapshot, if you will, of ADUs uh, and where they fall in terms of being, uh, market rate rentals or affordable rentals. Uh, clearly that could vary, um, within the city and within the county. But we are, you know, proactively trying to get, uh, that data. Unfortunately, we don't have it right now. Um, but I wanted to mention that.
Mr. Munzer, when, when do you anticipate we may be able to see that?
I don't know. I've actually just made some inquiries to staff and, and I will get that information to you this week. I, I unfortunately don't have it right now.
No, no, I, I understand, but that would be really very interesting information. Thank you for sharing that. I'll start with, uh, Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, yeah, wanted to make some comments. I am definitely in favor of allowing an alternative maximum height for detached ADUs of twenty-two feet. I appreciate everyone's comments and I think at the end of the day, I agree with those who who see it as we are trying to supply housing during a housing crisis. And a lot of our zoning is, is just focused on or just reserved for single-family housing, um, single-family zoning. Uh, I looked at some research for this, you know? And apparently according to the UC Berkeley's Othering and Belonging Institute, they found that eighty-three percent of residential land in the Bay Area is devoted to single-family zoning and that means only seventeen percent of the land, um, it's legal to build apartments, condos, duplexes or triplexes. Um, and so building ADUs is simply just one piece of the greater puzzle and, um, part of the issues that people are facing right now, um, not having any type of housing, we can't, we can't deal with without creating ADUs that are twenty-two feet um, and also ending exclusionary zoning and also creating social housing, you know? But at the moment, we can't create, you know, there's no bill, well, there is a bill in the city or sorry, in the state for social housing and I'm excited to see if there's more, um, controversy to come out of that, you know, to help us with our housing needs. Um, because right now housing is seen as a lucrative property. It's something to be seen as a commodity and to make money off of. Um, so the city needs a lot of things. It needs a lot of regulating, uh, progressive taxation that would help, um, end things like, like foreign or what is it foreign like, what is it out of state? Uh, landlords and such like that, you know, there are so many things that we have to do. And this is just one thing that we can do right now in our, in our position on city council and for the city is to create twenty-two-foot max, um, ADUs because of the crisis that we are under, because people cannot just build so much housing or any type of housing because of how restricted it is, how zoning is so restrictive. And, um, it would be great for, for those of us who are struggling, um, those who are renting, who are suffering with chronic homelessness, to have an opportunity to still reside in the city, um, and perhaps nearby loved ones, as they say, as they're also known as granny flats. And so live decently. Mainly, you know, I grew up, uh, as a first generation, um, she can next person. So I've definitely seen people live in less than humane conditions and things that they made themselves, um, in shacks and stuff like that. And I, I greatly want people to live with decency, um, no matter where they come from or and all that. And I noticed that like some of the people's comments are that if we just created sixteen-foot story or sixteen-foot buildings, that would create a housing supply that's affordable. It really doesn't because that's only for like a select market of people, like it could be uh, only for a small family or a small couple, um, whereas there's also larger ways to incentivize, develop, um, I guess to incentivize homeowners to create affordable units. They could, um, the city can offer loan programs, fee waivers or tax credits to offset the cost, the cost of new construction or renovation. And these could be designed to encourage homeowners to make units affordable. So there are different ways to go about this than just throwing out twenty-two-foot story buildings. And I think it gives us the flexibility we need in a time where we don't have enough zoning. Um, we need to do a lot of things in the city to address our housing issue. Um, so that means making, um, it may mean banning, uh, single-family zoning or single, yeah, single-family zoning like they have in other cities, um, in the state and across the country, uh, which wouldn't. When I say that, don't get afraid, y'all. Like this would, this wouldn't like, um, prevent single-family units from being, from being built, but it would not exclude duplexes, triplexes and, and such, right? So if you're afraid of folks looking into your neighborhood, you got to invite creation of, um, more housing than through inclusive zoning. So I think we really need to be flexible during this time of crises. I think not many of us, not all of us have that sense of urgency or a sense of crisis because we're not struggling um, with the same efforts or maybe aren't struggling with it now and previously had, but you know, um, the conditions are very volatile for all of our residents and especially during a pandemic and this is the least we could do for anyone who lives here. Um, and there's so much more we could do. There's so much more, but this is the very least we could offer. And if the only thing is that it abstracts someone's view, I mean, it's the worst, that's the worst thing that could happen and you know, I guess we just got to live with that because else we don't really have any other housing options. Um, thank you for letting me take up the time.
Okay, Council member Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. I really appreciate you. Um, I know this has been, as mentioned, years in, in the works and I appreciate having different alternatives. I'd like us to see us move forward and have something that folks that are working on their homes can work with. So I'd like to see if we can come to a compromise and work with the twenty-foot limit. When I think of our cities and all of the different neighborhoods and I really appreciated the heat maps because they, they help us look at where the demand is. And, and it also helps us look where are the folks that are coming to talk to us as far as in comparison to those, uh, heat maps, which are a little bit different. And so that tells me that there are a lot of folks that are doing their ADU units. They are, um, happy, their neighbors are happy. We haven't heard from them and, uh, where they're building and it has provided, uh, much-needed housing that we need. So I'd like to at support or move forward with the alternative, um, number three that was in our, uh, staff report. Um, and see if we can not take another two years and give some direction to staff and also, um, you know, something that we can work with as far as folks having some flexibility. And when I looked at the presentation, you know, my favorite one was Belmont. It has the most flexibility. It's a smaller city. Think about it. It's on a hill. A lot of the homes, I mean, not the whole city of many of the homes. I wish we could have come up with something similar to that because there are so many different neighborhoods. It's not just districts, so many different neighborhoods in our city. And I'd hate to limit the possibilities of someone that owns their home and wants to do something for themselves and their families. So I'm just proposing that we look at the alternative number three.
Thank you. Council member Ready.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Thank you to all the correspondents and the speakers and a particular thank you to the planning commission members and staff for greatly contributing to this discussion, um, on ADUs. I've made clear in previous comments the fact that I am not a fan of two-story ADUs. Because of my experience that the larger the ADU, the less likely they will be providing affordable housing. In addition, speculators take advantage of the city's ordinance to build extraordinarily large units that when offered for resale are affordable to the very smallest percentage of residents. Um, though I have not been a fan, I acknowledge that my council colleagues do support two-story ADUs. And with that acknowledgement, ask that colleagues consider a compromise. I'd like to propose an eighteen-foot height limit going to twenty when needed for roof pitch. And, um, I would also like to, I remember the conversation about the short-term rentals and we were told that there are eight that fit this particular, uh, category. And I was, uh, told by staff that there have been no complaints about those short-term rentals of the ADUs. And if that continues to be the case, that we have not been receiving complaints about the short-term rentals, then I do support grandfathering in those eight, ADUs that are being used for short-term rentals. Um, I also support the idea that second-story above garages should be the same size, the same footprint as the original garage. The garage should not be larger than the, uh, made larger so that it can accommodate a larger, um, ADU. Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Ready. Council member Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. Um, of course, over the last few years, I've been intimately acquainted with, uh, the process that the city has gone through. Um, clearly this is an issue, um, where there are many, uh, firm opinions. Some, you know, communicated, uh, very rigorously to the council as well as the planning commission. Um, so I fully appreciate that. Um, but what I will say is that in terms of priorities, at least for me, um, and many of the people that I've spoken with, um, we have to talk seriously about steps to remediate this housing issue in the state as well as our immediate community. And I think that for me, that means looking at the alternatives that have been provided. Um, I would actually like to see, um, some thoughtful study on both the eighteen-feet, twenty-feet and twenty-two-feet options to think about how, um, it could impact the various parts of the city uh, where we're seeing, uh, demand for ADUs to be developed. I, I think that this conversation, um, is around providing, um, a lifeline to many of the residents of our city who are struggling to make rent in one of the most expensive places to live on the, in the, on the planet, in the country and in California. We can no longer, um, move forward and pretend that this is not the reality that we are living in. And, um, while I certainly appreciate, um, the comments of my neighbors in terms of their views, unfortunately, that comment doesn't land with me. I'm sorry. I really want to make space for multi-generational living situations. I want to be progressive in terms of the development, um, of this housing stock uh, within our community. And so I'd like to see as robust of a analysis on, uh, those alternative options as we can possibly get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And thank you, everyone, for four years of hard work. And unfortunately, as one speaker shared tonight, there are at least a number of other bills being introduced in Sacramento that are still talking about ADUs. So I, no matter what the council does, I suspect we won't be done, you know, this year uh, with ADUs, um, and it will continue. Uh, like my colleagues before me, I think we need to make a decision and I would like to make a, um, uh, I'm, I'm like to open the consideration to what Council member Aguirre said of a twenty-foot height. Uh, I do believe what was originally in place in the city of twenty-eight feet was way too large and unfortunately can't fix that now, but we can fix going forward. And so a lower height of around twenty feet uh, might be the right answer. Uh, sixteen was not, and that was the reason I supported pulling the item back in December because it just basically prohibited reasonable flexibility for second-story addition. And as difficult as this is, it gives flexibility across the city, not just in one or two neighborhoods as the housing crisis continues. And given the variation in lot sizes and housing configurations, we need to give flexibility so that these ADUs can be created uh, because unfortunately we're not creating more land at this point. So I'm, I'm open to considering, consideration of a twenty-foot height limit uh, as Council member Aguirre shared earlier. And I look forward to any continued conversation with the colleagues here.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Hale.
Uh, thank you. Oh, my lighting is poor, so I'm, I'm a bit of a ghost here, but, um, when I heard Councilwoman Aguirre, uh, express her support for an option, um, I heard, um, the Belmont option and just to paraphrase that option, thank you. Um, it is, and maybe staff could flip back to that slide so we could all be aligned. Uh, it is a sixteen-foot standalone, uh, a twenty-foot above garage with a flat roof, a twenty-three above garage with a pitch and a twenty-eight above garage if it meets setbacks and the setbacks are significant. What I like about this is that we keep coming back to this notion of we have very different neighborhoods in our community with different needs and you could very well imagine in Edgewood Park a twenty-eight-foot ADU that absolutely no one can see from anywhere because there are lots that are simply that big. But, but, but by and large, what I like about this spread is that, um, it accounts for aesthetics. I think flat roofs are not as aesthetically appealing and I think having some pitch um, would be much more pleasing to look at and then you're not staring straight at the height. It's, it's elevated up. So I'm very much in favor of the Belmont, um, solution. And, um, you know, we compromised actually a year and a half ago. We brought another compromise in the fall. I'm glad that we're back at compromise. I think this is, you know, certainly when we reach these times where we are at an impasse and there are differing opinions, this is, this is the right thing to do and, um, I think it's a, a reasonable solution. So I am, I am in support of the Redwood City version of the Belmont, uh, solution.
Uh, before I speak, I, I'd like to know, Council member G, did you have any last comments you'd like to make? Your hand was raised. And you're on mute.
My apologies. I didn't. I did not lower my hand. I will do that right away. Thank you for reminding me.
We're all doing it. We're all learning. Okay. And Vice Mayor Hale? I think you, okay. So I wanted to thank city staff for the heat maps. I thought they were very helpful and very useful. I also wanted to thank you for the scaled drawings. So I have a question regarding the scale drawings, and I guess it would be to Mr. Rojas. From the scaled drawings, what I came to discover is that you could do a second story at 18 feet if it was a flat roof. And if there's a pitch, it would be 20. And that you would have a, a, a normal second story. I just want to be sure that I interpreted that correctly.
That's correct. I mean, there's other things to consider, though. I mean, the shorter ceiling heights would be probably required for 18 feet in height. And there may be some complications in areas with bad soil or in flood zones. But yes, you would be able to obtain two stories with a flat roof for 18, and then with a low pitch, 20.
Okay. And I also know that you gave us an update on how many applications that we have received. Our ADU applications have gone up significantly, and, and that's good news. But most are one-story. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Only around 13% are above 16 feet in height that are detached.
And I also wanted to remind everyone that HART has a program where they're offering ADU blueprints and training to our staff. We've been chosen as part of the pilot program. And they're all one-story. And when I asked the question why, they said, because they're easier and less expensive to build. And so I said, okay, that makes sense. So that's going to be offered to people in the near future, I believe, that you'll be able to get these plans and save yourself so much money, because these plans have already been developed for you. So that's a real cost savings. I know my colleagues, the majority of my colleagues have spoken tonight in support of two-stories, detached two-stories. And I appreciate that. So I would say I agree with Councilmember Aguirre. I would like to, instead of having a split vote, I would like to see us come up with a reasonable alternative, a compromise that we can all get behind. But let's also recognize that the state have a number of bills in place, and if any of them do pass, it may impact and change whatever decision we make tonight. But for the time being, I would like to see us move forward together in a compromise so that we can get this off our plate for the time being, and let people move on and decide how they want to do their ADUs. So I would be in support of the exemptions that were mentioned regarding short-term rental. I would be in support of that for people who built prior to January 1st, 2020. And I would support option number three, staff's option number, alternative number three, which is an ADU, detached ADU of 18 feet or 20 feet, if that would give them a pitch to, to the roof line. And so I'd like to see if there is a motion that was mentioned a couple of times, and I'd like to see if there's a motion at this time, if there's no further discussion.
Oh.
Would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
Well, I was going to make a motion, but I, I apologize. I was reaching for my hand to be raised, but I reached for my video instead. So there were a couple of comments supporting the Belmont, and I'm just wondering if there might be energy behind 16 feet for detached, because that was on the Belmont list. The Belmont says 16 if standalone detached. And I'm wondering if there's energy behind that. That's what I would like to propose, is the staff alternative number three with that addition, 16 standalone.
So to clarify, that's, that's a 16 standalone ADU, 16-foot.
If it's detached. Yeah, if it's detached.
Okay. I guess we'd need to see if there was, and then, other than that, it would be option or alternative number three.
And that would be above a garage.
And that would be detached, above, above an existing detached garage.
Exactly.
Is how it's worded.
Exactly.
Okay. Ms. Ramirez, you have your hand raised?
Thank you. As Councilmember Ready looks to make a motion and has proposed, I wanted just to get clarification on one other piece as you're talking. Councilmember Ready spoke to kind of the Belmont approach, which speaks to a detached ADU being maximum height of 16 feet, unless above a garage, then I think it's 20 feet for a flat roof, since I don't have that on my screen anymore, and 23 for pitched.
Excuse me. No, it was 18 feet, and with a pitch, it would be 20. It's alternative, on alternatives.
Oh, for Redwood City. So I'm sorry. So the motion for Councilmember Ready is a, for detached, a 16-foot, unless above a garage. If above a garage, 18-foot for flat, 20-foot for pitched.
For pitched, right.
And then, Redwood City also has, in the proposed ordinance, that attached ADUs are subject to the requirements of the underlying zoning district, except when the ADU encroaches on the rear yard setback, it, the height shall not exceed 16 feet. And so I would like to hear, as, as the council members discuss, whether you'd like to maintain that 16-foot for attached ADUs that encroach on the rear yard setback.
Yes, I support that, maintaining that.
Okay.
Okay, a motion has been made. And we can clarify that once again, if you would like. Is there a second to that motion?
Mayor Howard, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Munzer.
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure, thank you, Ms. Ramirez, I wanted to flag the attached, if, within a rear setback comment. I appreciate that. I just want to be clear that I understand, if we could pull the table that shows the Belmont example, that what we're speaking to with this motion right now would limit detached standalones to 16 feet, and that the Belmont example, those additional heights are only if they're above a garage. So it would not extend, I have a question, it would not extend to 18 or 20 feet, which I think I heard possibly from Councilmember Aguirre initially, to detached ADUs. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what we're moving forward.
So my motion represented only the piece from Belmont that refers to the 16-foot standalone. It, otherwise, I was accepting the suggestion of the staff's alternative number three option.
Ms. Ramirez, your hand is raised.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't lower it from last time. I'm happy to repeat the motion that I understood, Councilmember Ready, to see if we can get a second and keep moving forward, if, if, you know, the council wishes.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, please repeat the motion.
Okay. So Councilmember Ready's motion is for a 16-foot height to attached ADUs within the rear yard setback and detached ADUs, unless above a garage, in which case she's willing to have a height above the garage of 18 feet for a flat roof, or 20 feet for a, for a pitched roof. So that's the motion, and that's what the ordinance would be under the height section. Is that accurate, Councilmember Ready?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. So the motion has been made, and I see Councilmember Espinoza Garnica has her hand raised.
Yeah, can I comment on this? Because I'm just, I'd just like to make a comment about the motion.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So, so what I'm understanding, Ready, is that you, so if it's attached, it's 16 feet. But if it's detached, it's 18 or 20, or 20 feet. But then that means that, like, they can't match each other's height, right? So that means you have them on the main building, you have 16, it can't go beyond 16 feet. And then, but if it's detached, it's, it can go two feet higher than the main one. So I just think that, if that's correct, is that correct? Is that correct, first?
So Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, maybe I can clarify. The, I, I kind of shorthanded it in only speaking to the part of the ADU that was within the rear yard setback, that's attached. For an attached ADU, so attached to the main home, the maximum height is whatever the height is for that zoning district, which tends to be, I think, both Mr. Rojas and Mr. Munzer mentioned, you know, about 28 feet. Unless it encroaches on the rear yard setback. That's how the ordinance is right now, that's how, but, but again, that's up for discussion. So if it encroaches on the rear yard setback, it would be 16 feet in height, the part that encroaches on the rear yard setback. And Councilmember Ready is proposing detached ADU of 16 feet as well, unless above a garage.
As it is currently, we have a 20-foot ordinance if there, if it does follow with the setback on ADUs that are attached?
The existing or the proposed ordinance? As it is right now, the proposed ordinance that's before you?
Yeah.
Is 16 feet.
Okay.
For, for attached ADUs that encroach on the rear yard setback and detached ADUs.
Okay. These are just a lot of concessions, and I'm, like, kind of confused at this point. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It is confusing. It's a confusing topic. Would any other council member like to speak to this motion, or second the motion? Or? No additional comments from council? Councilmember Aguirre, thank you.
I'd like to propose a, a counter motion. I don't know if I can do that unless that one has been seconded. But 16, again, is too low, even with a detached. I think we need to go to 20, and that's what I had recommended before.
Well, I, I do.
I, I move that we, my, my motion is to go to 20 feet, as I had mentioned before.
Councilmember Aguirre, could I, could I just ask something for clarification? It's been, it's been mentioned, 18-foot for a flat roof and 20 for a pitched roof. Is that something that you would consider?
I think I would consider 20-foot not to be 18-foot.
And the max being 20?
Correct.
Okay. So I'd like to ask our city attorney if she could.
Could we consider?
Explain the motion.
I'm sorry.
I'm happy to help. If I could, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, could we consider first the highest ADU? Because I, because I feel like we want to negotiate from top to bottom. And I feel like we're, we're meeting in the middle. And I was just wondering if we could motion first the.
Well, there's a motion, there's a motion being made.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask our city attorney to explain the motion. If there's a second to the motion, then we can have discussion.
Okay.
If it fails, and then someone else would like to make another motion. I'm trying to keep all this straight.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. I'm, I'm trying, I'm just trying to butt in with my questions. I'm sorry for y'all.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll work this through, no problem. Ms. Ramirez?
Councilmember Aguirre, I understood your motion, and I want to make sure that I'm clear on it. I understood your motion as being 20 feet for any detached ADU, whether above a garage or not. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And I'm wondering if you can add to your motion what to do with an attached ADU that encroaches on the rear yard setback. Do you also want 20 feet rather than the 16 feet?
And the ord, and the ordinance was 16 feet according, what, what you had mentioned before?
Right. So currently, as proposed, it is that the maximum height of an, a, attached ADU.
Correct.
Is whatever the maximum height is for that underlying zoning district, so typically about 28 feet, except when the ADU encroaches in the rear yard setback. In that case, it shall not be higher than 16 feet. So I'm wondering if you're willing to have a 20-foot detached ADU, whether you're willing to have a 20-foot attached ADU.
So it would be a detached 20-foot?
Okay. So you're only speaking to the 20-foot detached, and that's your motion to change?
Sorry. Yes, correct.
And so the ordinance as proposed to have an attached ADU at 16 feet would stand, based on your motion?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Then would that not be the motion that Councilmember Ready made?
No. So Councilmember Aguirre is proposing revising, so currently, the proposal is for a detached accessory dwelling unit, maximum height to be 16 feet. She is recommending, or she's made a motion for an alternative of a maximum height of a detached accessory dwelling unit to be 20 feet.
I see, I see. That was the difference. I, but you, you clarified the attached ADU for me, so thank you. So I see the difference now. I'm not sure everyone does, but I think I do now. Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre, are you, are you, is that, is that the motion that you want to be making?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again. So I'm just wondering if Councilwoman Aguirre would be open to amending her motion to allow for 20 feet above an attached, with an attached ADU? I actually think that it's kind of still in line with the spirit of the, of the ordinance that we're trying to move forward with. So I guess that would be my one question to her, if you'd be open.
Yeah, that's, I, I believe that's what I was proposing.
Okay, great.
Know how it was interpreted, so yeah, that was my motion.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
So there's a motion on the floor. As this, Councilmember Smith, did you second that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Munzer?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Just for clarity, so this motion would have a height limit of a detached ADU at 20 feet, and then an attached ADU that is within the rear setback, also at 20 feet. So that they align.
That's how I understood the motion. Yes, Mr. Munzer, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
My question would be, Mr. Munzer, do you feel that what we're proposing would alleviate some of the concerns we get quite frequently about mass imposing into others' yards? Do you, do you think, I mean, it is going significantly down, is my sense, from 28 to 20. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to be really clear before I vote. Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica, did you have any comment or question about the motion before we vote?
Yeah, I was just wondering why we have to settle with 20 feet. I mean, last time, I was hoping, I don't know, I don't know what happened last time, but I was hoping from the last impression, we'd have folks on board with 22 feet. And I think that'd be far more livable. And, yeah.
Well, we do have a motion and a second. If it does not pass, then you can make. If it does not pass, then you can make a motion. The motion right now is as stated, and you can choose to vote yes or no. So if you're comfortable with that, and I don't see any other hands raised, maybe we should call for the vote.
Okay. But this is for Aguirre's, right, not Ready's concessions? So Aguirre's is.
This is for Councilmember Aguirre, seconded by Councilmember Smith.
Okay. Although, yeah, it's for it.
Well, let's go through the.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. My bad. You know, you can tell that I'm new, okay? Right? You can tell I'm new. Okay?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is a little bit of a hassle.
It does get complicated. I'd like to ask the city clerk if she'd call the roll call.
Mayor Howard, Mayor Howard, maybe just for clarity, can you enter into the record that Councilmember Ready's motion failed due to lack of a second?
Thank you. I was trying to, I was trying to do that before, but it kept getting interrupted. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ready, it did fail due to lack of a second. So let's put that on the record, and then the new motion is made by Councilmember Aguirre and seconded by Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you.
We'll start with Councilmember Ready.
This is difficult. Um, yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. It was a pretty robust discussion, and thank you for your patience through that, and thank you to our staff for their assistance. Now, we have no more items on the agenda. I'd like to let you know our next city council meeting is scheduled for March 15th, 2021, which actually, it isn't a city council meeting, it's a state of the city. It will start at 6 o'clock, and I hope you will join us, because we have a wonderful video to share with you that I think you're truly going to enjoy. So I hope you will join us on March 15th for the State of the City. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I hope that all of you and your families are staying healthy and safe. Have a very peaceful evening, and have a good night. Bye-bye.